No agenda changes.
Okay, you need a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Need approval of the minutes of July 26, 2012, or any corrections or any additions. Need to know those at this time.
Move the proposal out to board.
Motion second to approve the minutes of July 26, 2012, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Any council members in the audience? Would you like to speak?
I'll work with you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry. And any items to be deferred?
Brenda's going to give you those, I guess.
There are two items on the deferral agenda. The first item is 3A on page five of your agenda, and this is a request to cancel a portion of the Hamilton Hills Urban Design Overlay District, which is located at 330 Murphysboro Pike, zoned RM9 and RM20, and proposed for CS, and the recommendation is to defer to the September 13th Planning Commission meeting. The second item is 3B on page six of your agenda, and this is a request to rezone from RM9 and RM20 to CS for property located at 330 Murphysboro Pike and located within the Hamilton Hills Urban Design Overlay District, and the recommendation is to defer to September 13th, 2012.
Okay, has been a request to defer items 3A and 3B to September 13th. There's a motion to do so. Motion second to defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any items on consent?
There's one item on consent, but before I read that, I have information for our audience. If you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And I'm now on the consent agenda, and these consent agenda items will be voted on at a single time. There won't be individual public hearings, and the commissioners will not debate this item unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And the item on the consent agenda is under Other Business on page six. It's item four. It's amendment number four to contract L-2268 between the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County and PB Americas, Inc. for general planning. And the staff recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. Staff has recommended that we approve on consent, item number four. Do I motion to do that?
Motion.
Motion second to approve item four on consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is now official. Cynthia, we are ready for item 1A Midtown Plan Amendment.
Good afternoon. Items 1A and 1B will be presented in succession with the public hearing to follow the two staff presentations. The first of the two is a community plan amendment request, which I will now present. This is a request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan 2005 update to change the land use policy for a 0.67 acre property at 407 and 409 31st Avenue North from residential low-medium density to T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance. The staff recommendation is to approve the request. The subject site is a small irregular triangle of land located along 31st Avenue South between West End Avenue and Hillsborough Village. It is opposite the Vanderbilt University Athletic Fields. The site currently contains a duplex that's located at the far north edge of the property and is now zoned RS 7.5, single-family residential with a 7,500 square foot minimum lot size. The current land use policy for the site, which was applied in 2005, is residential low-medium density, which is also known as RLM. RLM policy supports residential development at densities between two and four housing units per acre. The site is at the northern edge of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood, which is a large and established urban neighborhood that lies mainly inside I-440. It is diverse in its housing mixture and development patterns, and a variety of policies, as you can see from the slide by the differing colors, were applied in 2005 with the Green Hills Community Plan update. It's a walkable inner-ring neighborhood that's conveniently located to concentrations of jobs, services, and a variety of institutions, such as universities and hospitals. Transit service is available along the major transportation corridors that border the neighborhood, and the site itself is about 1,500 feet from West End Avenue and less than a mile from Hillsborough Village. The proposed policy that is being requested would change the policy for the site to one of the newer community character policies. Right now, that RLM policy is one of our older land use policy application policies that are were applied in the pre-2009 community plans, and gradually, the community character policies are replacing these older policies through plan updates and plan amendments. The policy that's requested is called T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance, or T4NM, a policy designed to maintain the community character of established urban neighborhoods. This policy would also make sense for the broader Hillsborough West End Neighborhood's residential properties, assuming the community's vision continues to remain consistent with the policy incentive of conserving an established neighborhood. T4NM is therefore being recommended for the subject site with the addition of a policy provision known as an infill area. Infill areas, and you can see the outline around the property here, are places within established neighborhoods where vacant, underutilized, or land in a non-residential use could redevelop. Infill areas are different from the neighborhood-evolving policies of the community character manuals because generally, they're smaller. More commonly, they're interior to neighborhood maintenance areas. These infill areas may have different building forms than the rest of the neighborhood maintenance area commonly has. And if the community plan includes an infill area, the infill area will, as in this case, have clearly identified boundaries and guidance on the desired residential development pattern of the site. While this site sits at the edge of the neighborhood and lies between areas of different intensities, it exhibits elements of a character that is typical of the broader neighborhoods, such as a relatively small size and being clearly part of a residential environment. Here are some ground shots of the site. It's a little difficult to capture in one picture unless you go way far away. You can see 31st Avenue. And here is the site facing onto 31st Avenue, and this just allows you to look farther back into the site, and you can see the home that's on it now, the sort of light gray. Typical of an older, established urban neighborhood, Hillsborough West End contains several historic properties. In light of this, the National Register Historic District has been applied by the Metro Historical Commission to a large portion of the neighborhood. In addition, the Hillsborough West End Conservation Historic District, Historic Zoning District applies to the part of this area shown in sort of the brown tan color. The subject site, while within the National Register District, is not within the conservation overlay. The duplex on the site is considered to be a contributing structure of the National Register District, but does not have the conservation zoning. So just to clarify, the National Register District reflects the presence of historic properties within the larger district, but does not prohibit or restrict redevelopment. The conservation zoning would restrict and guide redevelopment, but once again, the subject site is not within the conservation zoning district, just right outside it. A community meeting was held by the Planning Department on May 21st this year, and we had approximately 25 people from the surrounding Hillsborough West End Neighborhood mainly. And most attendees did speak and expressed various concerns about the impacts of the proposed policy. And these ranged from potential traffic impacts, specific concerns of that nature, to the broader implications of the policy change. The site is somewhat unusual in its configuration and location within the neighborhood. Other properties along 31st Avenue North have more typical urban house lot configurations and sizes, and are more fully occupied with housing. While those other sites are also at the edge of a neighborhood along the busy arterial, and also enjoy transit access in proximity to a large university, Hillsborough Village and West End Midtown, they are configured and oriented quite differently from this triangular site that lies within a distinct curve between two alleys. These factors lend the site a unique character that is appropriate for an infill area provision. The site's location and orientation establish it as a property that needs to respond to the neighborhood to the south of it, but also to the mixed use and intensity that are to the north of it, in the Midtown area and in Vanderbilt. This is similar to other properties along 31st to the west and east of the site, but while generally of a much older character than the subject site's anticipated development under today's market conditions, the residential properties along the rest of 31st are higher density than most of the properties that are more interior to the neighborhood. This is something to be expected, given their specific location. Neighborhood and maintenance areas can and do have major transportation corridors within them or around them, and neighborhood and maintenance policy anticipates and responds to such conditions without calling for significant changes in character, which would be the case if one were to consider neighborhood-evolving policy instead. So again, back to the infill area concept. In addition to acknowledging unusual circumstances, infill area provisions also provide policy guidance that is respectful of surrounding established neighborhoods. Infill development is appropriate in this location because of the existing access and frontage on 31st Avenue North, which is a major multimodal arterial street, and the opportunity to provide additional choice, housing choice in the area, as well as the site's access that I, and proximity that I mentioned earlier. So those provisions for this specific infill area, what is being recommended, include the following design principles that are above and beyond those found in the T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. With reference to access, it's being specified that the vehicular access in this case is from adjacent alleys, while pedestrian access is provided not only from the alleys, but also from the street, as well as what will be planned to be the site's open space network. Regarding building form on the site, development in this proposed infill area with other than detached single-family residential building types should be implemented through urban or design-based zoning, and is probably best implemented that way regardless of the housing type. It is also especially important that buildings in their primary entrances face 31st Avenue South, and that usable open space features that are complementary to the urban environment and provide multiple benefits are provided on the site and are integral elements of the overall development design. Regarding the historically significant sites or features, the infill area policy calls for the development on the infill site to be compatible with and complementary with the neighborhood's historic character. Again, the staff is recommending approval, and this concludes the staff presentation for item 1A. Greg Johnson will now present the associated specific plan.
My name is Greg, and this is the SP portion of the presentation. The request for the SP is from the current RS 7.5 zoning to a residential SP. Staff recommends approval of, approval with conditions of the SP request. Again, the current zoning is residential, single-family, on a 7, 7,500 square foot lot, minimum. Cindy went through the policy, the current policy is RLM, residential low-medium, and the proposed policy is T4 Neighborhood Maintenance with infill area policy. Just to go through the site plan, the proposed site plan, there are three access points to the site, two along 31st Avenue, along the north, along the two adjacent alleys that run along the west and south of the property. The third access point is along 32nd Avenue, where those two alleys meet at the intersection with 32nd Avenue. 25 parking spaces are proposed along those alleys. There are five parallel parking spaces along the alley to the west, and another, and another 20 along the alley to the south. The nine dwellings along 31st Avenue are detached with a maximum height of two stories, and they're intended to have a strong relationship to the street frontage facing 31st Avenue with walkways from the front entrances to the sidewalk along 31st Avenue. And these are characteristics that are similar to surrounding residential development. The site will have a back-to-back relationship with adjacent development across the alleys, and that means that the back of, the back of this site will face the backyards and the rear parking areas of the adjacent sites. And the placement of the parking along the existing alleys allows for the shared landscape area, the landscaped yard, and the triangular space between those dwellings and the alleys. The development of the SP will be consistent with the character of surrounding residential development in terms of the building form and the site layout. And here's an aerial of the site to close. And staff recommends approval of the SP with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. The site is open for public hearing. That could be allowed 10 minutes for presentation, and you can reserve two minutes of that for rebuttal if you'd like.
Yes, my name is Jim Harrison. I'm with Civil Site Design Group, and I am the project engineer. Just wanted to, and with me today is the project architect, Jim Lowen, who will be speaking next. I just wanted to say first, we are in complete agreement with what staff has described on this, and I've gone through the conditions very carefully. Our initial review of this site, we noticed some pretty unique things, not just the shape of the site, but also the alley on the rear of the site was in very poor condition. It's an alley that's used currently for collecting trash in the neighborhood, on the back of the lots. There are some components that we've added to this plan. One of the things we wanted to do was improve that alley along the southern portion of the site and make that alley wide enough. We heard that in neighborhood meetings as well, that we wanted to make that 20 feet wide, not only so the trash trucks could maneuver, but also so we could get parking off of that alley and in and out properly. One of the things that we wanted to do as well, looking at the existing site, was to preserve the trees along the backside of the alley, which are on the property line. But there are also key trees up along 31st Avenue that we wanted to make sure we were preserving as well because they enhance the view as you drive down 31st Avenue, very mature trees. What we are proposing, of course, is upscale, individually-owned townhomes. And our original plan, when we first started looking at this, had 11 units. As part of the discussions with the neighborhood, we have actually reduced that to nine units and gone to just two-bedroom units. As part of that, we've also increased the landscaping. We've also increased some of the walkable areas through the complex. What we are trying to do is create a, and what we believe we have done, is create a walkable community that has significant dressed-up landscaping, courtyards, a very walkable-friendly development. Part of what we did, as part of this analysis and evaluation, though, is we wanted to look at the properties on the west and the properties on the south, and look at currently what they're being used as. And very commonly, they're either student or young adult. They're, if you have a bedroom, there's a car associated with that bedroom. That's the type of uses that we see immediately to the west and immediately to the south. So what we did to make an apples-to-apples comparison is since we have two-bedroom units, we compared ourselves with a, an equivalent two-bedroom unit to what, how many bedrooms are over next to us, just to say two bedrooms equals two bedrooms. And when we did that, we found that we came up with a density to the west of us of 14.4, to the south of us of 7.8, and we had 13.4. So we felt like we fit very well with this nine-unit total. We also looked at the floor area ratio to the west and to the south of our property. And again, that to the west of us, we had .31. To the south of us, we had .23, and our site had .36. So again, we felt like we fell right in that range. We want to make sure that we're not doing anything that's out of character with the density. We want to make sure that we're doing something very upscale. We also want to make sure that we have adequate parking. One of the things we've heard in the neighborhood meetings quite a bit was to make sure that we had plenty of parking for the site. We've got one space for each bedroom, plus an additional seven spaces for visitors to come park, which is a pretty good-sized number from a ratio standpoint to make sure we've got any kind of overage when visitors come in. We have also included drainage, underground detention, rain gardens. We have courtyards. We're going to do quite a bit of water quality as part of this to go to the underground detention to make absolutely certain that we're not going to have any increase in runoff from stormwater to the infrastructure that's out there today. We have very closely coordinated this with Public Works to make sure there aren't any safety concerns with the alley with the properties on the west, make sure that there's adequate room for those existing parking spaces that are there now to pack out safely. The bottom line of all this is that we've created a heavily landscaped with courtyards behind these units. We've enhanced, we've created a community development that will be, that will enhance and have a walk, and have a walkable nature to the entire project with the sidewalks that are integrally a part of this plan. I want to turn it over to Jim Lowen now, just to talk briefly about the buildings.
Good afternoon. I just want, I might repeat a little bit of what Jim said, so I apologize if I do that, but just describe the architecture a little bit of this proposed development. We did start with 11 units. They were a larger floor plate than what we're showing here on this final plan. That actually went up Mall Borough Alleyway as all, as well. But with our meetings with the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood and with Councilwoman Berkeley Allen, we had had meetings with planning staff as well. We had made revisions to be respectable to their concerns and sensitive to their ideas about what we were doing. We made a lot of adjustments to that plan, which is what you see here, which has taken us from those 11 units to nine. We fronted all the units to 31st Avenue with entrances directly to 31st along that main pedestrian walkway, and created a four-sided masonry structure with high-end materials such as limestone accents, copper roof detailing, things like that, that would really fit in with the neighborhood to the south and the other communities surrounding the site. Part of the difficulty was this, this property is triangular. It's backed by two alleys, and fronted by a four-lane road on 31st. And it basically is right in between this wonderful neighborhood to the south and then this large open field in Vanderbilt University. So this definitely became an infill buffer-type project that with this new layout, along putting all the buildings against 31st, seemed to work with the property very well and gave a nice buffer to the back of it, which is a highly landscaped, park-like situation to the back around the parking areas. We've also provided bicycle racks that are enclosed for the tenants. But all in all, what we're proposing here is two-story, two-bedroom units, and all of these are for sale, young professionals. It's only intended for that, definitely not for rent, anything. We're definitely trying to put this towards a nice, higher-end look that meets the community behind us and also addresses the institutional property across the street. With that, I'll introduce Sean Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. The infill policy being proposed here is certainly appropriate at this location. This property, this triangular property is more on the edge than it is an infill site. You've heard the rear-to-rear relationship between what's being proposed here and the properties in behind it, and with the slope and topography of this property, it actually pushes these buildings closer to 31st, allowing for more shallow front yards and front setbacks that is a provision of your policy document. It'll certainly serve an effective transition, we believe, between the higher-intensity institutional use of Vanderbilt University, as well as a sound buffer, a physical buffer, between the noises coming off of 31st and emanating back into the neighborhood. There's 8,000 cars traveling along 31st Avenue on any given day. There's 18 vehicles that'll be added to this site and to this traffic circulation pattern in the area. 18 vehicles of that number using 31st Avenue 90% of the time for their access to and from this site. So we certainly don't think that there's going to be an added traffic issue here. It fills out the gap. You saw the photos of all the grass on this property. This certainly will fill out the gap that exists there today of underutilized development. We think it's a smart addition of these buildings framing 31st Avenue, and we think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood. So with comparable densities and negligible increase in traffic, we think it's an appropriate addition directly across the street from Vanderbilt. We'd like to reserve the remaining time, Mr. Chairman, for any rebuttal. Thank you.
How much time do we got?
1:20.
Got a minute and 20 seconds. Others in the audience that'd like to speak in favor, if you're laying up behind the microphone, come and give us your name and your address, please.
My name's Everett Lowe. I own three properties over in the Music Row, Hillsborough Village area. The closest one's 1502 18th Avenue South. They say a great preacher has a good beginning, a great ending, and very, not much time in between. So I'm not going to take much time. I'm in support of the development here. I think it adds quite a bit to the character of Nashville and to the neighborhood, and I believe it will be in high demand. I do have several letters here from residents that are close to it that I would like to present to the council as well.
You give them to the staff, they'll accept those.
I am done.
Thank you. Please come to the microphone, just. Nobody else in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Tom Cash. I live at 3104 Ackland Avenue, a couple of streets away from this, and I'm the chairman of the Neighbors Association, Hillsborough West End Neighbors. There was a lot of discussion about this. We've looked at it very closely over the last couple of months. The gentleman that just spoke in favor and are asking for this change are very nice gentlemen. I enjoyed working with them. However, ultimately, there is no neighborhood support for this change. We had, we invited them to our board meeting, and they answered lots of questions. We had the community meeting, and there were some, some changes. I don't know that they were major changes after that community meeting. There was a third, I had a third meeting with some, with a gentleman, with Mr. Lowen and Councilmember Allen. There were plenty of communications and other, by other means, phone and email. So we didn't, we don't take this lightly. We, we came to this, to oppose this after careful consideration. And I just want to, just, I've sent you all a letter detailing some of our opposition, but I'm just not finding among neighborhood leaders on our board and a lot of people close to this property, no support. And you know, there's discussion about nine versus 11. Really, what you all have to decide is, are we going to change the community plan? Are we going to change the zoning? And I could not find support for that. And so I would ask that you not change the community plan one to two lots at a time. A lot of what's, I guess, west of this, the houses face the side streets, they don't face Blakemore or 31st. That is new. That is, and should be looked at as a large section rather than one or two lots at a time. And also, I would ask that this, just what now can hold two, and I think a fraction, so two single-family houses, to go to nine, and it's a kind of a strange slice of land. I think that's just a huge increase. Thank you. I hope you vote against it.
Good afternoon. I'm Jan Bushing. Years ago, I sat on the Planning Commission, '70s and '80s, as a matter of fact. I live at 2804 Natchez Trace.
You're chair of the planning.
I chair the planning. And unfortunately, the number of years that I have lived, thank God, have told me that we make mistakes. And I think this is a mistake in that it sets the trend for changing this area before this city has put in the infrastructure. In the '70s, we separated finely storm and sanitary sewer. In the '70s, we separated finely storm and sanitary sewer in this neighborhood. But folks, it still meets together in West End. And if we seriously are going to move this city forward, we cannot continue until we address the infrastructure. And that's what planning is all about. This is one small triangular piece, actually created by Blakemore Wedge Wood Connector being built through there. Before that, there were several older homes facing the street. There was not a triangular piece remaining. But in view of the fact that we've got lots of young families that have come into that neighborhood and it pulled it back, we should respect their concern and not allow this kind of density until we have a plan in place with their infrastructure to support it. And that's where I think changing the community plan at this time is wrong. I know we're trying to go to mass transit, which is a good thing. But to support that, you have got to address sanitary and stormwater sewerage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Linda Bangson, and I'm a resident of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood. I have Daisy Hill Bed and Breakfast, and I'm on Blair Boulevard. I sit on the board of the Hillsborough West End Association and have been following this for, as Tom was saying, several months. This picture is misleading because you don't see how close, if you took that picture and did an aerial of that picture with all the other homes on the street right there, you would say, oh, my goodness, this is just too much. I can't do this. This property, obviously being zoned for two, as Tom said, 2.3 or 2.4 homes, private, single-family homes there, it's totally inappropriate to put that many homes on that property. We've been in Hillsborough West End area since, I worked at the old Commerce Union Bank in 1983. And when I moved into that area, so much of that area was just being restored. It was coming back. Currently, as I said, we live on Blair Boulevard. The Blair House, which burned down and is also doing some reconstruction on that particular property space, will add so much to the community. And in two, maybe three homes on this property, that probably would add a lot, too. I think this is inappropriate in looking at trying to put that many homes on that much property with as many other homes that are just surrounding that. And the street that is, which is, which would appear to be your right north side is already a very densely populated street. So I thank you for your time and hope you will not vote, or not approve this. I think you would be actually disapproving it at this point. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for your time. I'm Hunter Moore. I'm a 30-year resident of this neighborhood. Live at 2115 Natchez Trace. Actually, just to speak, follow up on what Linda just said, if you looked at the picture that I'm looking at, on the bottom edge, those are all people's backyards. So that might help you see what the impact on them and their concern is going to be. I, too, am concerned about changing the community plan for one acre, for less than one acre of land, and also for something that the majority of the community is against. The Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Association Board, of which I'm the secretary, voted unanimously not to support this proposal. Even under this request to change to T4 urban neighborhood maintenance, this project doesn't even meet that. It says that it will be consistent with the residential character. This is not, you're not even seeing the street facades in this picture. And it does not complement the historic character of our neighborhood, which T4 actually specifically says that it will. So it's not even meeting the guidelines of the new designation that you're asked to approve. I'm not against greater urban density. I can see the need and even the benefit of that. However, I feel like this is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Michelle Miller. I live at 3,003 Blakemore Avenue. I'm within 600 feet of this property. The proposal before you, in my opinion, in this meeting, I don't know that is necessarily about community planning. To me, this is not necessarily about even doing what's right for the city. To me, this is about making money. It's about a property that's been purchased, a spec property that's been purchased, in the hopes of making a quick dollar on the backs of people who have worked very hard over many years to make this neighborhood what it is and to protect it. According to tax records, the owner of this property, who does not reside in the neighborhood or even in Nashville, has an investment of a little over $200,000 for both parcels. And I can tell you that all day long in our neighborhood, in Sylvan Park and in other areas, people are investing in this kind of property in building single-family homes that respect the integrity of the neighborhood and that comply with community plans already in place. And these investors make plenty of money doing that. And in so doing, they, in a measured and meaningful way, contribute positively to the character and growth of the neighborhood. According to Realtrex.com, average sales prices for single-family homes on this lot size is a little over $400,000 in this area. Higher-quality homes selling from $600,000 to $800,000. All day long, turning an investment of $230,000 into more than $1 million is a perfectly viable business proposition, one that investors all over the community are enjoying without annihilating community plans and without extraordinary zoning changes. So candidly, we as neighbors, we're not responsible for making sure the owner of this property makes money. And that's not your responsibility either. As leaders, we're looking you to make sure that this city grows with some kind of integrity. And we have structures in place that allow for that in the form of well-thought-out community planning processes and zoning rules. And I encourage you to continue to use those structures as they were intended. You're a planning commission. Please use the plan that's in place, and please do not approve this change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Arthur Doak. I live at 2807 Blakemore, a few houses away from the proposed development. I'm against it, and here's why. The Hillsborough West End Neighborhood is a limited resource in Nashville. Nashville does not have very many neighborhoods like this. This neighborhood's unique. That neighborhood used to extend in more or less its current form all the way to Garland Avenue. And that was like back in the '50s and '60s. And due to a slow change of the, you know, tearing down houses, first they go rental, then they get torn down, then something else gets built, and then Vanderbilt, you know, buys it or whatever, the neighborhood has sort of regressed all those blocks from Garland Avenue to Blakemore where it is now. So I see this zoning change as sort of a failure of the code system to protect the neighborhood in its current form. There's sort of a cascade effect. First, we have this development, which is not in character with the neighborhood, as my neighbors have said. And then, then the next time a lot comes up that's deemed to be appropriate, they'll point to this and say, well, look, it's already been doing. So it's sort of a cascade effect where the neighborhood gets slowly eaten up by this. So I think that the development would be fine if there were just two houses on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Berkeley Allen, council member for the 18th District, and I live at 3521 Byron Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. And as Tom Cash said, I can't speak more highly of the developers. They have done an excellent job of communicating with the neighbors. They have responded positively to many of the suggestions. They have made a number of changes, which we are appreciative of. But one comment that continued to come up every time there was a discussion was, we feel like this is too many units for this neighborhood. If it would be possible to go back to that map that shows the bigger picture, just for context, I have concerns with the bigger one. That'll work. The request to change the community plan, I'm not comfortable with. You've heard the lack of support I have from the residents, which is one thing I need to listen to. The second issue is that, as Hunter said, the T4 designation should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and maintain the neighborhood character. As you can see from this map, there's a very, very clearly defined and consistent neighborhood character of roughly 50-foot by 150-foot lots with a single-family home on them. So I think to say that this is maintaining the general character is something that is a stretch from that designation, I think. Were the community to go through the community plan process and say, yes, we think 31st Avenue needs a buffer zone with an infill, and as a community, we made that decision, then I can understand how, from a planning process, you would say that that's an appropriate border on 31st Avenue. The community who is here today is not supportive of that change, particularly on a lot-by-lot basis. And I think a community change in general should be made by a larger one. Do I get any more time as a councilperson? I'll stop if I have to.
Thank you.
Do I?
Go ahead. I'll give you another minute.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And so I would say, while I appreciate all the effort that the developers made to listen to our concerns, he has dealt with parking very well. He's dealt with landscaping. He's dealt with the immediate stormwater on his property. And I think facing 31st Avenue is a good thing. But I do have concerns about the number of properties and of changing a community plan on a single-lot basis without the support of the community. So I would ask you to consider the request of these neighbors very carefully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Miriam Mims. I live at 2410 Blair Boulevard, where I've lived since 2005. And I appreciate the opportunity of being able to speak to you tonight about this issue. I also sit on the board of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Association. And as a director, I have heard many proposals and attended many meetings of different and various and sundry developers in our area. Some we have actually supported. Some we've worked very hard to hammer out resolutions that were mutually beneficial to everyone. I don't want to belabor some of the points that have already been made, but infrastructure's a huge issue for me, having gone through the flood and other things that have happened to us. Traffic is a big issue. The, supporting the tapestry and the fabric of our historic community is very important to me as well. But one thing I do want to point out and add is that within a year, we will be adding to our neighborhood over 40 single-family dwellings at the end of Blair Boulevard. That has been worked on and collaborated with. We're very happy about that. Or I can speak for myself. I am very happy about that, the way that that's worked out. We have over 60 units coming up on 21st. We have more units at Acklin and 24th, I believe, three units, single-family homes there. So we do work, and we do support growth. We support smart planning. We look for intelligent design that works for us. And I would like to say that this does not work for us. It is not smart. It doesn't work within the context of all the other criteria that we consider when we look at these things. And I would urge you to not vote in favor of this zoning change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Pastor Crowe. I'm a resident of 3,004 Blakemore Avenue. My backyard looks on this property. My son lives next door, and I'm authorized to speak for him. His backyard looks on this property also. The comments, and I met with the developers, and I appreciate all the time they've come. I appreciate them calling anyone who lives in the area young. I've not been called young in a long time. They said that their development would match the property density. If you look at that map, and I'm glad Councilwoman Allen had you put this up, the reason the density in that area is so high is that our lots are small. So if you compare the density of what they're doing with the density of what's there, it artificially makes the density of the neighborhood look higher than it really is. These are single-family dwellings on single lots. So this density change is a huge change from the way the neighborhood is constructed. And my house was built in 1928, a nice stone house. I fail to see how anything they would build there would match the neighborhood characteristics. I'm appalled about this wedge coming into our historic neighborhood. Just because we're on, it's on the edge of it, doesn't mean it isn't still seen and isn't still part of our neighborhood. The developers said that there would be, you know, very little use in the alley. You know, that's now an alley that's used by an occasional trash pickup and an occasional vehicle going down it. It will now be used, you know, frequently by multiple vehicles. So it's a big change in the traffic in my backyard. And so I strongly urge you not to approve these changes. The community plan, I think, has lots of wisdom to it in trying to protect the neighborhood, and I urge you to protect the neighborhood, as the original planners wanted it protected.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Aiden Hoyle, and I live at 3102 Blakemore Avenue on the property adjoining this site. And I'd like to speak in opposition of this proposal. I also went to the community meeting and appreciated the opportunity to hear more from the developers. But I do echo the comments my neighbors have made about
I didn't say them here.
this property not keeping with the historic character of the neighborhood. My main concern is safety. On that block of Blakemore, immediately adjoining the property, there are eight children that are school age. And we walk, basically, all the time. And I'm very concerned about the number of vehicles coming up and down Blakemore and in the alley behind our homes and the impact that will have on safety. And that's my primary concern. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Russanne Bucchi-Fautre. I live at 3005 Blakemore. Neighbors with most of these folks. I guess I could just say ditto. I just hope that you will look at, I think the community plan that we have in place right now is a good one. And I think to breach that is just a slippery slope that we'll start. And I would like, and the traffic, I really, it's already very, used very much as a cut-through for Vanderbilt Love Circle and up through that area. And I just would beg to differ with the builders. I think they have tried hard, but I feel like there's just not enough. It's too much for this space. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Brittle. I'm a real estate broker at Village Real Estate Services. I live at 5474 Franklin Pike Circle, which is down near Creve Hall. I don't live in this neighborhood, but I was part of one of the biggest sub-area plan changes in Davidson County history in the last 20 years when they put a target in my neighborhood. So I understand a little bit about the process. And I would like to say that unless we can figure out a way to have plan, community plans changed sooner than every five to seven years, we're going to have to figure out another way to do this. Because these guys who are neighbors do make good points, but in order to grow, like our development in this city grows, and I've been selling in this neighborhood for 25 years. I was selling in this neighborhood when Vanderbilt was still buying pieces across the street. And we can't do it any other way. We have to do it, piece by piece. So respectfully, I disagree with the neighbors that we need to wait until the next community plan change for this neighborhood. Because we would never do anything in Nashville if we had to do it that way. I would also say that having, and I'm in support of this development because I believe this is the kind of housing that we need. In fact, I know that this is kind of housing that we need. I don't have to quote from Realtrex because those comparables, a large percentage of them are mine, because that's what I did. And I can't, I believe that we can't have it both ways. We can't stop the sprawl from around our county and around our eight-county area and not have density where we have the infrastructure to support the density. And I will tell you that there is a great development going on at Blair Boulevard, and it's 40 units instead of the 80 or 100 that it used to be. And so I think we're making progress. And this is the type of development that the public is looking for.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Lindstrom. I live at 2706 Fairfax Avenue, and I've lived there for best part of 25 years. I don't have any trouble with developing vacant pieces of property. This is a piece of property I'm familiar with. My dog and I used to walk it. There were two houses. One went into disrepair and was torn down. The remaining one is about in the same condition. I agree with the people that preceded me in that I think it can be developed, but if you look at the basic density you look at the basic density there, three single-family units is going to be in keeping with the plan and I think the general neighborhood. I think it can be easily done. If you look at the setbacks all along 31st, if they kept that consistent setback down along there, it would probably tap out at about three units, and I'd be perfectly acceptable with that. But with the density that's being proposed right now, I can't say that it's anything short of taking a single-family, one-per-lot neighborhood and turning it into a series of condos. We do have some condos down to the right there between, heading towards 26, and I think I said in a letter that when those were built back before, I think when Rick Shepherd was still around, they had a buffer, they had a setback to masonry walls that went along Blakemore, and that was landscape, and then there was additional large front yard between Blakemore and where the actual condos began. Behind that, there was another green buffer with an opaque fence. This won't give an opaque fence, because the alley is their front road. That's their front door, so I'm not in support of this, but I think it could be amended and it could work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? The applicant then has a minute and 20 seconds to rebuttal.
I just want to come back, of course, in favor of the project here and discuss a little bit of the changes that we did make from the original plan. Our original was much more dense. We had it connect, all units were connected along 31st and up Marlboro, the alley there. And after both of our meetings and discussion with planning, we went back and reduced that about 40% of floor area to create the nine units from the 11. They all were separated units, so they're all single units, not connected anymore. We added a lot of landscaping and made it as pedestrian and bicycle-friendly as possible. And also, to also mention, we are rebuilding the entire alley to the back of the property that's in very much disrepair, providing a tree-lined area, and also putting concrete pads for the neighbors along the backs of their homes for their trash areas to keep the alley free and nice and neat. Also, to discuss, the property is being developed for, what it can be developed for, which is for single-family dwellings. It's not marketable for that, because basically you've got the alleyway, you've got 31st, there's no other homes in that area except for the one presently on this property that faced 31st. They're all, the other properties on this plan, as you can see up here, the side all faces 31st.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Do you need a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor? And opposed?
This one isn't easy, obviously. I think the neighborhood plan is an important question about what we're looking at over the whole. I was just curious, from staff, if we're, Rick, if we're looking in this area, if you pulled, I think there was another image that had a broader picture that showed the plan uses, where that yellow is, and...
I'm sorry, are you speaking from the...
I think there was a picture, oh, maybe it was from the, your president, maybe the first one, that showed the whole use, more of the plan use, what the community plan called for.
The policy.
Yeah, the policy. Sorry.
Let's see, let me get back up to it.
Well, while you're looking for it, I mean, my question is, when we see it, if we're looking at some other parts of this same community plan where we are looking at some heavier-density opportunities to balance this one, I mean, is this the only one, or are there places, and obviously there are new developments coming in, I'm just sort of curious. Yeah.
Is this the picture you're referring to?
That's the one I wanted, thank you.
You see, the residential medium density is the darkest orange, and then the low-medium is the yellow, and there are some other policies, a little bit more mixed housing, somewhat newer in the neighborhood general and neighborhood urban, that are towards Hillsborough Village, which of course is mixed use.
I'm just interested to hear everybody's conversation about the policy change first, and how we feel about that one site within that, and I'd kind of like to reflect with everybody on that question.
Does the applicant have a rendering of what the units themselves are going to look like from the street? They keep saying they're going to be in keeping. Are there renderings that we can see?
They submitted a rendering with their first application with the 11 attached units, and I have that in here.
Yeah, I don't think they ought to show that. I mean, that just got relevant on this. Yeah. That's all.
Derek.
Yeah, similar to Andre, I do have some concerns about the policy in general, and the two things that kind of stood out at me as I reviewed the information is that, number one, the density, and number two, the consistency. Because when I look at this one area, and I understand that this one particular area has some challenges, nonetheless, when I look at it in comparison to everything else, it looks sort of as if it's a carve-out to me, and, you know, we're talking about consistency, but yet we're carving this one little piece out to change the, basically to change the land use on this. So I have some concerns about that. So again, density, I do think that this is still higher density than the area in general based upon what I've seen, read, and reviewed, but secondly, consistency. Is it consistent with everything else around it? Because again, this looks like a carve-out to me, and I have problems with that. Well, this is the area I live in, and I have a lot of experience with this, but some issues have been raised that I really need to think more about with some of you and with perhaps resource people. I am interested in hearing from someone from Stormwater, if we could. Because that's been raised, in the context of the total infrastructure of the area, Stormwater's been raised, and I think we have made county-wide a pretty amazing amount of progress with Stormwater, and have a department of water services that is more professional and better-regarded than in the history of the city. But that doesn't mean where we'd need to be, and I guess I'm just going to ask you, obviously, you've approved this from a standpoint of what this development might either create or not create in terms of additional problems. I mean, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean, that you've given it your approval as to Stormwater?
Steam issue with major Stormwater. The first thing we look at is in the combined system, is that we make people tie into combination lines that are at least 18 inches or better. What we require is that this development, what they'll do is they'll separate the storm and sanitary throughout their site, and then when they combine into the combined system, that's when they could combine back into a combined system, but during their site, they have to keep it separated. So that way, in the future, if there's ever a separation project, we don't have to go back on private property and re-separate something that the private industry should have done already, so...
Are we still working towards separation throughout the county?
We're doing some. I don't want to speak for the sewer department, because it's...
Different department.
Yeah. If there's storm and there's sewer running in the same pipe, that's usually handled by the sewer department. The unfortunate thing is, the separation process is quite expensive, and you really can't separate on the inside of the combination system without separating on the outside. So most of the separation projects are towards the edges of the combined sewer system. So you really have to get to the edges before you could actually do some major projects over there.
One of our speakers mentioned something about the West End, West End itself or the Western area, one or the other. What about that? Is that a problem area for us right now as a city?
Well, a lot of redeveloped areas, such as Green Hills, what they'll have is they'll have smaller lots, and then when it gets redeveloped, they'll redevelop with larger lots, and, you know, the smaller lots usually have, you know, buildings and a lot of grassy areas, and they come in, they re-divide, and you'll end up with more roofs and more pavement. So you'll end up in some of the infill areas with some undersized systems over there.
What about right here, in this area? Is this a problem area for our partial mark?
I wouldn't want to say yes or no unless I were to look at all the drainage complaints that we have in this area. If somebody calls, we have a record of that complaint. It will go to a different group than the Development Review Committee, the Development Review side that I'm on, and it will go into a system. So there could be some drainage complaints that are called in, but there's also some complaints that could be, there could be actually some Stormwater issues out there that haven't been called in yet. We'd only have a record of them that are called in, and I don't have that information available.
All right. Very, thank you. I'd like to ask the staff to address a little bit more about what 31st and Blakemore, what the current use is, and obviously, it goes from Hillsborough Village on down to West End, but can you point out the single-family structures that face Blakemore?
Currently, the single-family structures that face Blakemore only face, I may have to go to a different slide to zoom in, but they face this segment of Blakemore. They don't face the segment that's going in the other direction. These homes all have their rears facing 31st, because of course, it gets confusing in that the street changes names, and the fronts, front this portion of Blakemore, these structures in this direction all have their sides to 31st/Blakemore/Wedgewood. So this site would be one that, like ones further towards Hillsborough Village, that were being spoken of, I believe, by one of the speakers referring to condos that had walls around them. Some of the units may face 31st, but they are oriented internally. They are developments, condominiums, or multifamily developments that are more internally oriented and do not address Blakemore, although there may be occasional units that face it.
Okay. So, and as you go down toward 21st, essentially, Blakemore, since the urban renewal, has been a street of parks, a church, commercial, and condominiums, and no single-family addressing Blakemore.
That is right.
Is what it looks like to me. I say that to point out that as much as I respect some of what has been said and who has said it, it is only part of the story, to put it mildly. That does not mean that we should make this change necessarily, but it is worth noting that the plan amendment we are being faced with today is to deal with the plan amendment that dramatically decreased the density available a few years ago. And I wanted to ask the staff about that. How long has this been RS?
It was, correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, it was rezoned to RS in 2004 from an R zoning district.
As part of a broad...
As part of a larger zoning change.
What was it before that?
It was R8 before that, so that would have allowed...
What kind of structures would have been allowed as a matter of right under R8?
It would have allowed a single-family and two-family, or single-family and duplex development.
So four, something like that?
Well, the density is, it would allow 3.8 units, so if you're subdividing, it would probably be three lots, and so that would be six units total.
Right. So less than a decade ago, we did rezone this as part of a mass rezoning. I am a big believer in the Hillsborough/West End neighborhood, in large proportion because it is a very diverse neighborhood, and I was more inclined to support this rezoning before I realized how upscale it was supposed to be. Sorry, I'm a child of the 70s, but we have lost a lot of our affordability, and this isn't going to add to it either. But, you know, we have in fact seen our share of oversized buildings, oversized residential and small lots, that is, that people want to buy, which is certainly why people build them. But it is a very eclectic neighborhood, which has always had a fair amount, as Berkeley has pointed out to us before, a fair amount more multifamily than many neighborhoods. At the same time, it is, you know, whether we have this particular mass transit system that we're talking about, which is very close to where this is, or simply the ability of people now to use the current system, it is what we have looked for for so long in terms of more density close to transit, not necessarily RDT or RPC or whatever it is, but any sort of transit. And we also have a walkable neighborhood, which presumably would mean people would spend some of their time working, living, playing, shopping, going to the bellcourt from this area. It's a walkable neighborhood, it's what we'd like to see in other parts of the city. And I do not share the belief that this proposal will be anything other than a, I don't think we're likely to ever go back into the neighborhood. Now, having said all of that, there is a certain balance we have to look at in terms of what neighborhoods are ready for, and I'm not sure that's a planning decision. We don't usually count votes as we make decisions here. That is a council decision, but this is not an open-shut case, that I think frankly that either side has made it. So having basically cast cold water on everybody's point of view, I'll just turn it over to Hunter to try to bring it back to what we are.
Thanks, Stuart. Where'd Steve go?
Steve Mission.
And Steve, you may have already answered my question, but do you know if the big Stormwater project that's either started or is going to begin, this sewer project, $1 billion that Scott Potter talked about, is it, does that include projects in this area, and do you know if it specifically will address any of the concerns in this area?
Unfortunately, I don't know anything about that, whether it's in this area or not. So unfortunately, I don't have that information for you. Sorry.
My second question is related to the difference between RLM policy and RM policy and the proposed community character manual policy of T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance in terms of densities. The RM policy, is the T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance allowable density in the range of the RM policy?
It is a broader range. It anticipates a wider variety of densities within a neighborhood, but it essentially can go up to 20 units per acre, depending upon locational criteria and other policy criteria. In a neighborhood maintenance area, you are maintaining that neighborhood in a sense, so you would, one would take cues on that from the surroundings. Now, as you were inquiring about the residential medium-density policy, that being one of the older policies, the main thrust of that policy is one of numbers of density, and it is expressed in a range of four to nine housing units per acre.
Thank you. The reason I ask is, you look at the map there, and the area of Love Circle and this area sort of, I guess, Natchez, sort of the west side of this neighborhood, has more topography, has fewer alleys, has generally larger lots than the east side where you've got the RM policy. But if you look at the pattern right there up at Blakemore, and I don't know, I mean, it just, I'm just eyeballing it here, but the pattern of lots on alleys, it's tighter, it's more the sort of probably 50-foot lot sort of densities, and so, well, you know, the RLM makes a lot of sense in most of this area because of the somewhat larger lots and lack of alleys... somewhat larger lots and lack of alleys and the topography. I almost wonder if, you know, this area is actually maybe more consistent. I don't know if staff can address this with those areas that have the RM policy on them currently. Which brings up a question of, you know, to develop a project at seven units to the acre, is that approximately what we're at? Nine?
This is about, the proposal's about 13 and 1/2 dwelling units per acre.
13 and 1/2, okay. Okay, so that makes sense why you've got to go to the T4 Urban Neighborhood, up to 20 dwelling units to the acre. And then the RM policy, you said, allowed up to, sorry, I thought I wrote it down here.
Nine?
Up to nine, that's where the nine was, okay. So we're over the RM policy. Well, okay, that helps me understand the policies.
Hunter, just before we leave that, I want to clarify, and make it clear enough Cindy hit that, but the T4 Urban Neighborhood policy does not allow, as a matter of right, up to 20 units an acre. It is, it accommodates urban neighborhoods much like this, and obviously that we have in other places. And the individual density has to be, and a maintenance area needs to be, at least compatible with that. So it's not as much focused, as you know, on numbers as it is on whether it fits in from an urban design perspective with what's around that, where the residential medium policy is much more driven just by the number.
Okay. So, you know, it's, I think it mentioned before, I mean, Blakemore 31st is, you know, one of our major roads in this area, and is a transit, has transit on it. It's a wide road, it's right next to an anchor institution, it really is one of those streets and locations that increased in intensity and density. Makes a lot of sense in general. You know, the flip side of the infrastructure question is that, you know, we have a real challenge maintaining our existing infrastructure and increasing and improving our existing infrastructure because of tax revenue generated. And the higher our average density becomes over time, the less that's going to be a problem, because on a per capita basis, it costs less to service higher-density areas. So to me, this area makes a lot of sense, given that there's infrastructure there, there's transit there, there's sidewalks, there's major institution where you want higher-density housing around it to service. And ultimately, as we approve projects at higher densities in the right locations, our tax revenue and our per capita expense for infrastructure is going to go down. So I'm, generally, I think I'm in support of this, and I understand the neighborhood's concern. Certainly, I expect the council lady to respect that and address that at the council level.
Judy?
Thank you, and thank you, Hunter, for putting that in perspective, because I thought that that was exactly what we were looking to do, and that this would, this particular area would be ideal if we're looking to, in fact, create walkable neighborhoods and to do that kind of infill that several of my colleagues, we have done in several neighborhoods. Also, you know, having the transportation plan in place, all of those things that we have talked about as we have had input on creating a design. But let me ask the staff, on this, a minor plan amendment, so moving this from the residential low to the T4, we're saying that that's minor. And what makes it minor, because it sounds major, but...
It's typically, there's certainly, the executive director has discretion on the major and minor plan amendment determination, but generally, when we are going from one residential category to another residential category, it is generally considered a minor plan amendment. When going from, say, a residential to a commercial or mixed-use category would typically be considered a major plan amendment, because you're not only moving within the realm of one type of activity or environment and intensifying it, but you're changing to an entirely different type of environment. Although this was a minor amendment, for which we do not normally hold community meetings, we realized that it was of enough magnitude that that was important.
Right, so normally, we wouldn't have gotten community input?
Not in that form, no. It would have been, would have occurred through communications, through emails and letters and calls, and through participation in the public hearing.
So this zone change, so the staff obviously approves the minor plan amendment. This is, the zone change then, going from single to this, asking for the SP so that we can do, put the amount, the numbers of units in here that they're looking to do, seems, you know, and again, this is ideal spot to have that kind of infill, to have that kind of, the number of units available here, it's ideal. But moving, how many single-family homes would be there? Is that the...
Under the current RS 7.5 zoning, you could hypothetically, you could theoretically divide the lot up into, the two lots into three lots, three lots total.
So is it, this particular lot, the way that it's designed, the way it's laid out, would that be feasible?
Uh...
Because it looks like it would be.
Yeah, with the shape of the site, it would probably be difficult.
Yeah, they probably couldn't get more than two in there.
I mean, the square footage of the area is large enough to accommodate three lots, almost four, according to the square footage of the triangle, so it's, I don't know, it's the square footage, the square footage could accommodate three lots.
I heard Stuart say, you know, we're not used to counting numbers, but, you know, I'm always interested in community input, and I've been chastised for that in the past. So I'm not counting how many folk came in opposition, or how many letters are here, but it's concerning, but I'll listen to my other two colleagues and enter the debate.
Well, thank you. You know, looking at this at first, I was impressed, thought that this was a very good plan, and then I started thinking about, you know, where it says, "existing character of the neighborhood," and I guess I've got to ask, is there another example anywhere in this neighborhood that's going to look similar to what this is going to look like when it's completed? Or is this going to be unique?
You know, again, Cindy kind of talked about the projects along 31st and Blakemore. There aren't a lot of examples of units that face on the 31st Avenue in this area, and that's, you know, that's where the density is the highest right now along that street. But in terms of, you know, in terms of the nine units along the frontage, maybe not, but, you know, again, this is intended to be compatible in the stories, in the detached form, and in the frontage along the street with the surrounding area. And that's, those are the kind of characteristics that the surrounding residential lots have.
Okay, but again, my question, just for clarification, is it going to stand out like a sore thumb?
Let me try and answer that. Number one, I would suggest that staff would not recommend this project look like other higher-density projects along Blakemore. That would not be the model that we would suggest that this emulate.
Okay.
I think that if you're looking for a streetscape, this is going to be very close to the new single-family houses that are going in on Gale Lane in terms of the streetscape frontage.
That was the second part of my question, was are there other examples in the city that are, would be kind of, you know, give us a guideline?
Yeah, I think that's pretty, pretty close. I hadn't actually measured out, but it's probably pretty close in terms of what's going on. I would say it's probably fairly close to the one that's going on on, what, Chesterfield? I guess relatively or something roughly. I mean, you're talking about, again, I haven't measured these out, but probably a 20-foot building frontage.
Cottage.
Yeah, cottage development. I mean, there's several examples, we could give you those, I'm just, off the top of my head, Gale Lane would probably be the closest one, comes to mind immediately. There's one over in, what's the one, in Sylvan Park, it's...
Just for West End.
West End Station, right.
Clarification, I think one of the things that was unclear from the comments and the presentation was, this, there are people who are worried that this won't be compatible, and how could people say it would be and all. I don't think it came across quite as clearly as I thought, that part of the conditions are, that the, as the plans go forward, doesn't there have to be another review by the commission's staff? I mean, it's not, I mean, presumably, the commission and staff would not approve, even if this were approved as is, they have to come back. Now, it's unusual for a contested issue like this not to have more visuals for the community, to put it mildly. That's what's creating some of the issue.
Yes.
But I don't think we can say really yet, that's what's bothering that, we can't really say what it would look like.
Okay. You know, the basic elements, and if this was just a little pod sitting by itself, it's great. I mean, if you had a triangle in the middle of the desert, and you had, you know, configuration like this, fine. It just concerns me about character, I guess, is the only thing that bothers me. That's all.
Ultimately...
To the staff, to the staff, if existing zoning is RS 7.5, if we were to use that decimal designation to indicate this new category, what would, what would that be? Would it be like a 3.5 or a 3.?
The fallback zoning that they've used is RM 20, which is multifamily at 20 units an acre. That's the closest category it falls into. If, as, in terms of a lot size, yeah, what would that be? It would be, yeah, it would be in the 3,000, it would be in the 2,500 to 3,000 square foot range if you're just doing lots, I guess.
2.5 to 3.5, somewhere in there?
Somewhere in there, probably.
So it's a significant reduction comparatively. Okay, thank you. My primary concern is when I read the proposed land use policy here, it's, or it says that efforts would be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood in terms of its development pattern, building form, land use, and then special consideration will be given as to how to blend the edges of the infill into the surrounding neighborhood. And when I look at the smaller detail picture here of how all of these lots are oriented, you know, this doesn't fit to me. I know that I'm supposed to wear my planning commissioner hat in here when I come, but I still have traces of my district council member hat that comes with me, and this just seems to me like a spot zoning. You know, to what the developer has proposed, I mean, it's a great plan, and it's commendable all of the efforts that they've made to accommodate some of the concerns, but the bottom line is, it just doesn't fit.
What, it's not going to...
Let Stuart go in.
Yes, sir.
This is a classic case of growing pains when it comes to what does new urbanism mean, and what does, what does an urban neighborhood mean? I think the time where we should, where we are, where we should be building single-family on Blakemore is gone, for purposes of sustainability, of transit, of a walkable community, just like, just like a lot of urban neighborhoods. And yet, I think the time has not come for this proposal, partly because it's not asking too much, I think, for a neighborhood like this to know a little bit more specifically what this is going to be, and what it's going to look like. And secondly, because I think, even though I'm not necessarily, I don't, I mean, we really don't have single-family on Blakemore. It is at the edge of this neighborhood, and we're not building single-family, that's why it's been vacant this long. But at the same time, this density is probably a bridge too far. So in my judgment, it's not ready for prime time, even though I sympathize with a lot of the staff's analysis about the need for more density and the need for, if not here, then where. I get all that, but I don't think this is quite ready for prime time. That's just my, having listened to all this and heard from my colleagues, I just, I don't think it's ready for us to support, and yet I would caution everybody to not think that this is the end of this, because it really is at the edge of a neighborhood, close to everything we want in an urban neighborhood in terms of walkability. And I just, to me, it would be a spot zoning in light of what's up and down that street to put a single-family on it. Don, David? No, you're going next.
Okay.
I'm running the show.
Yeah, I think it's a really challenging question, because one thing we haven't mentioned is the 28th Avenue connector. And if we're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about connecting these neighborhoods with a really important plan. And so the sewer and stormwater that has been debated surely has come into that conversation, I hope. The question of, I mean, this is, it's, there are many ways to look at this right now, and when you think of it as if we're adding six extra dwellings, if you take the bird's eye view, we're talking about 12 to 18 more commodes. You know, how big an issue is it in that sense when we're on 31st, which is part of the 28th Avenue connector? Being on the edge of the neighborhood, I was looking at it more sort of in the center because it's away from the two different policies, but it's on the northern edge. I think the place that I got uncomfortable, and I maybe still am, is from a policy standpoint, we do need to look in other parts of this area. I mean, there are some intersections deeper in the neighborhood near where we're trying to create walkability. We want a diversity of abilities of different types of family to live there, so we don't want just big houses. We do know that we need some places, even within the existing policy, and so we can't wait five more years necessarily for that, but can we, could we get the staff to look in some of this broader area of, are some places where we could have some denser things, so that the time has come for them when they're thoughtfully planned? Is this the catalyst for that, or is it not yet, and we have to go look around and find others and then do six at once? I mean, I don't know how you, how you do that. It's a, you could look at it as sort of like a courtyard cottage development, you know, if you think about it, it's not, it's nine units in a really busy area near a giant institution. If you're not going to do single-family on Blakemore, in a way, this is, it's more like a cottage, are you going to have another commercial or another church or something that faces, what do you want on Blakemore that accommodates that traffic? It's not an opaque fenced-walled area, which to me is a good thing, because that's about transparency and walkability and safety features. It's not armed off by itself, which that part of it I like. It's a, I think we need to, we do know that SP has control, that's why you have it, so is there going to be thoughtful planning on how this fits in? is there going to be thoughtful planning on how this fits in? Do we have security that SP would make it okay? The 28th Avenue connector thing is a part of the big issue for me to know that this whole area is changing, and we are, we're helping instigate it, so what are we bringing along with it? Are we bringing people that are going to ride those buses and connect all this together and be able to jump on a bus and get to Maharry, or, or not? I mean, I just, it's a, it's a big question that we've got to talk about, and I don't know if this site is the one to get us to talk about it, and we do something about it tonight, or we wait and think about it in the bigger picture. But I just wanted to raise that issue.
Quickly, Andrea, there is a crosstown connector that will be using 2831st. It's already in designs by the MTA, so that, yes, that will happen, the longest road.
Putting people on that corridor to use all that and connect these institutions that we're really happy about is a good thing. So how, can you, can we look at it in that perspective and not feel like we're destroying a neighborhood that we all love and care about, or not?
Andrea.
I was just going to respond to Stuart's suggestion that whether we're ready for this kind of leap, and I just don't see it as that big of a leap necessarily, that we're along a major corridor, near, near anchor institutions, we've approved much higher densities along smaller streets in other similar urban neighborhoods to support, to support the, you know, principles, you know, that, that we talk about. So I don't see it as that big of a leap. We're on the edge of a neighborhood, along a corridor with transit, and again, as I said before, I understand and respect the concerns of the neighbors. I don't think we're ever going to see, you know, the concern of it creeping back into the neighborhood, as you mentioned. And so if anybody doesn't have any other comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Before you make your motion, I just want to say, to some degree, there's some point of that that's not, also not bad. I mean, having courtyard developments or projects that create density when you're trying to bring people to schools and, and what we're doing, no, we, we want that. It's not a creep. It's, if there's some positive elements to that, that eventually we are going to want, we're going to have to have, because we've got to create the density that is going to make all this work in the future. So I guess I don't want to say it in the light of, well, this will be the last one, we'll never do it again, because I don't think that's true, and I don't think it's a bad thing if, if it were thoughtfully done.
Andrea, I was just thinking about the history of sort of the land, as the, as the whole neighborhood has been sort of moved back, and Vanderbilt's taken land, and it creeping back into the depth of the neighborhood, just, you know, along, along this corridor, though, I think it's appropriate. So I'll, go ahead.
I'm about to make a motion on that, and, and I agree with a lot of what you just said. I think it's not beyond what we should be thinking about to realize specific history. And this is an area, it's long gone, and Vanderbilt University has now seen that one of its major selling points is stable neighborhoods on the west and south, and they have been, in many ways, exceptional neighbors for many decades now. But the history is there of stable, middle-class families, and the power of government being used to wipe them out. And that is where this is, at the corner of where that wiping out stopped. And in light of that, you may be right on some of what you're saying, but it, it behooves us, I think, to think a little bit about whether this is perhaps, even for those of us who believe it shouldn't necessarily have to be single-family, whether this is exactly the right thing at the right time. I'd just remind you of that history, which does come into planning, I think. Andrea, I think you wanted to make a motion.
Yeah, I certainly respect that, for sure, and understand. I'll make the motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Second.
That's on item 1A, right. We don't have separate.
We need to do them separately.
Just for the policy.
It's amended policy, and then it passes, and then you.
Decide whether this is the right plan or not.
Yeah. Okay, the motion is to approve staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we got three. Wait a minute.
I'm just, thank you.
Raise, raise your hand. Okay, we got three.
Four.
Four, okay, against. Okay, it's a tie vote, and I'll break the tie, and I'm going to go with staff recommendations. So the motion carries. We're going to take a 10-minute.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, you're right.
Oh, wait, wait. It requires six votes?
Yes.
To pass?
Thank you.
Pass, okay, the motion fails.
Okay. So you now need another motion.
Mr. Chairman, in light of that, in light of the plan being not recommended, I move we disapprove the next item. Is there a second to that? Motion, second, disapprove item two, or 1B, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries to not approve. We're going to take a 10-minute break and ask the commissioners to be back here.
Item 2A is a request to rezon property to specific plan, and item 2B is a request to amend the overlay for the property proposed for SP. Burton Hills is outlined in red, is located on the east side of Hillsborough Pike in Green Hills. The slide should give you a general idea where the development is located in Green Hills. You can see the hill center just to the north. Specific site for this application is outlined in yellow. This is a closer look at the specific site, which is outlined in red. It consists of 120,000 square foot office building and two surface parking lots. Proposed zoning will impact the entire property, but the proposed modifications to the, to the site only pertain to the two, to two areas outlined in yellow here. No change is proposed to the existing building. Staff is recommending approval of the SP and approval with conditions of the amendment. Here is another view of the site. Again, this area, the area proposed to be changed under the amendment is outlined in yellow. Here's another view from Hillsborough Pike, looking into the site. The zoning on this property is office and res, is R15 with the Office and Residential Plan Unit Development Overlay. The overlay was approved under the previous zoning code. Unlike today's code, overlays did not have to be consistent with the underlying based zoning district, so in this instance, the property is not governed by the based zoning district, but by the council-approved PUD plan. This is the last, last approved council plan. The original plan was approved in 1984. This plan was approved in 1998. It includes residential uses, assisted living facility, a church, and office uses. The plan limit, limited office uses within the PUD to 550,000 square feet. In 2007, the Planning Commission approved a revision to the PUD for the subject site. The plan shown here includes a four-story, 54,000 square foot office building. While the proposed plan increased the overall floor area for office uses in the PUD over what council approved in 1998, the zoning code permits the Planning Commission to approve changes that increase the overall floor area within 10% of what was last approved by council. The 2007 plan was within the 10%, and therefore did not require council approval. Here is the current request. The plan proposes minor modifications to the existing parking lot located on the eastern end of the site, outlined in red, but the major change is to the western area outlined in red here, which is proposed for a seven-story building with 110 square, 110,000 square feet of office space. Access to the site will be from Burton Hills Boulevard at two, two locations. This request increases the floor area above 10% of what was approved by council, so therefore will require reapproval by the council. Under the new zoning code, overlays must be consistent with their base zoning district. Because of this, because this is an amendment under, the code requires that the zoning be, that the zoning be changed to be consistent with the plan. The applicant has chosen to rezon the property to specific plan. The proposed SP is similar to any other zoning district in that it regulates bulk standards, including floor areas, impervious surfaces, setbacks, height, and parking. This is in the, this is in the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan. The land use policy is office concentration. This policy supports large concentrations of office uses, supporting commercial and medium to high-density residential uses, and supporting commercial uses. The requests, both requests are consistent with this land use policy. The request also meets several critical planning goals. It promotes compact building design, it supports infill development, and supports walkable neighborhoods. This request also provides corporate office space, which is needed within the metro Nashville area. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval of both requests, approval of the SP and approval of the PUD with conditions, as the plans are consistent with the land use policy and meet several critical planning goals, and staff is recommending disapproval without all staff conditions.
Mr. Chairman, we received and are getting copies for the Planning Commission, but a letter from Councilman Sean McGuire on this. We thought it was with a different case, and we just discovered that it actually was with, for this case, and if you don't mind, I'd just like to read it quickly for the record. It's, it's to the Planning Commissioners, dated August 3, 2012, regarding Burton Hills PUD Amendment Case Number 18-84P-001. He writes, "I apologize for not being able to attend the August 9 Planning Commission meeting, but I did want to encourage you to recommend approval of the amendment for a portion of the Burton Hills PUD that would allow for an increase in the total floor area for office use to 660,000 square feet. I am still in the information gathering stage and do intend to hold my own community meeting on this PUD amendment at some point before the public hearing at the council. However, I do request that you recommend approval of the PUD amendment so that we can continue to move forward in that process. The applicant will be participating in a community meeting of the Burton Hills Home owners Association this coming Monday, August 6, which I hope will give the community more information on this proposed amendment. I am encouraged by the applicant's willing to meet with the community and hear their thoughts and concerns. While I cannot personally be there or at the public hearing before you on August 9, I will be paying close attention to the outcomes of both meetings. Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate your service to our great city. Sincerely, Sean McGuire, Councilman, District 25."
The applicant, this is open for public hearing, applicant to be allowed 10 minutes.
My name is Tom Harwell. I'm with Akin Partners here in Nashville, and I've got with me William Hastings with Hastings Architecture, and, oh, gosh, I'm sorry, Amy Birch. Why don't we call you Amy Birch? I'm sorry. Amy Birch with RPM Traffic Engineers. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to share this project with you, and wanted to start just by thanking the staff. They've been generous with their time and their expertise as we have moved through this process, and of course, thank you guys for your careful considerations of these opportunities that I think continue to move our city forward. We are really fortunate that the neighborhood of Burton Hills and this site specifically has been identified as a suitable location by Nashville Company for a headquarters building. And so we're here this afternoon asking that you would approve this amendment and allow for an incremental increase in the allowed square footage in the commercial portion of the Burton Hills PUD. You know, with that, as Sean's letter suggested, we can continue this conversation with the neighborhood and with the councilmen, and we can take the next step in replacing a parking lot with a much-needed Class A building here in Davidson County. So prior to the meeting, I think, I hope you got the information about our firm. For those of you who don't know us well, our chairman, John Akin, who's with his sister celebrating her 70th birthday this week, has been in the Nashville market about 30 years, developed 3.5 million square feet. Recently, notably, the SunTrust Bank headquarters downtown Nashville, as well as the Roundabout Plaza and Music Row. And John was one of the original developers at Burton Hills, and 10 years ago, this past June, along with a local partnership, purchased the first two buildings in the park. Our partners are folks that live and work in this community, and they, like us, take great pride in the quality of their buildings, the care of their buildings, and the neighborhoods in which they're located. And we're going to continue on that track record. We're going to replace an underused parcel with a Class A headquarters. You know, and I assure you that as a local company, that we want this process to proceed in a positive way. And as Sean, he has asked for approval of the amendment today, and he is committed to continuing this conversation, and we're committed to that, too. We're going to be a part of those conversations, we're going to work hard to find solutions, and specifically to one that has been identified as an issue today, and that is cut through traffic from Harding to Hillsborough through the residential portion of the PUD. We've spent a great deal of time considering this plan, and we think it makes good sense. It's passed muster with the planning staff, and it meets the community plan. And so we appreciate your time very much and your consideration this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you for your service very much, commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is William Hastings with Hastings Architecture Associates, our address, 127 Third Avenue South, downtown Sobro. We were retained by Akin several months ago to capitalize on this great opportunity to keep a great corporate citizen in Davidson County, and we brought along barge coth and engineers, as well as RPM Transportation Consultants to be part of our team. Amy Birch is here with us, she'll talk about traffic in a minute. When we started this process, you know, it was obviously extremely important for us to get with staff first and foremost. So we've had numerous meetings with staff to talk about building placement, talk about density, talk about use, talk about sustainability, talk about community plan, all of these things that are critical to our city progressing. The debate, you know, just before this, this hearing was certainly interesting and pertinent to where our cities have, we have great challenges in front of us, we have, people want to be here, they want to stay here, and how do we handle that? And so one of the things that was extremely important to us was making sure that we had a use that was consistent with the uses around it. So we're talking about a commercial PUD that has office use currently at 600,005 feet, 605, I think, thousand feet entitled. We're asking for basically an 8% increase in that, just to break it down and boil it down simply. In addition to that, Public Works found that, that the infrastructure is completely in place to support this type of additional density on this site. You can read the comments back from Public Works, so much so that a traffic study wasn't even required, and I think some of you on the commission certainly know the significance of how often traffic studies are required in our city for new development, especially rezoning, and that this one didn't warrant that because of, they thought the impact would be so minimal based on the volumes of the streets and the infrastructure in the area. One thing, if we can go to the next slide real quick, if you don't mind, that we also took into consideration was the building proximity to adjacent buildings. You know, as Tom Harwell said, you know, they own Burton Hills 1, currently, which is adjacent to us, and also the other, one of the other buildings in Burton Hills, which you can see in this slide, I know you have screens, so I'm not going to point to it with a laser pointer, but our building proposed is the one you see at the top in the north, Burton Hills, which you see there, 6. You can see the distance between our building and Burton Hills 4 is 83 feet. If you look at the, look at the distance between 4 and 2, look at the distance between 2 and 3, and the distance between 1 and 3. And we felt like those were important dimensions. It's actually a change from the previous design. The previous design that the staff went through with you, if you saw the 54,000-foot building before, was actually closer to Burton Hills 4 than this plan is, so we've moved it further away. It also helps to address Burton Hills Boulevard in a better way. So in addition to that, we've got some pedestrian improvements we're going to be making at Burton Hills Boulevard, at the, at the intersection of Hillsborough Road. We've got a connected, a connection of a sidewalk that doesn't exist today that will be continuing on Hillsborough. We've got over three acres of surface parking that don't meet the current stormwater regulations, and we've basically surface draining basically all the oil off the cars, and we're going to be reconfiguring both the surface parking lots, one to accommodate for a building and the other to reconfigure it to accommodate some additional parking in that lot. So we'll be bringing that up to the current stormwater requirements. So thank you very much, your consideration.
Hi, my name's Amy Birch. I am a traffic engineer with RPM Transportation Consultants, and we've prepared a traffic analysis on behalf of the applicant. Our analysis and evaluation of increase in office space is summarized in a letter that should have been provided to you. As you know, Public Works did not require a traffic impact study for this project, and that's because the increase in traffic is, is very minor. They did, however, provide conditions of approval without the traffic, a traffic study based on their expertise and, and evaluation. Our analysis included an estimate of traffic that will be generated by the additional 52,000 square feet of office space based on standard traffic engineering practices and procedures. In our professional opinion, the impact of the additional 52,000 square feet of office space beyond the, the 54,000 square feet of space, which is already entitled, will have a negligible impact on the traffic operations and traffic flow in Burton Hills. Specifically, we project that the office space will generate a total of 42 more. Specifically, we project that the office space will generate a total of 42 more trips by the additional office space during the AM peak hour and just 19 more vehicle trips during the PM peak hour. In preparing our analysis, we conducted traffic counts and observations at the access points to the existing Burton Hills office building. And we determined that most of the traffic uses Hillsborough Road to access that office building. So we would assume that the additional office space that's being requested would continue to use the same type of traffic patterns. In summary, we think that the conditions that Metro Public Works put on the development will provide safe and efficient traffic operations in the area. And those include additional pedestrians facilities at the signal, as well as a median modification. We're available for questions, and if there's any leftover time, we'd like to use that for rebuttal. Thanks.
Thank you. Please. Okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the applicant? Please come forward.
I would like to speak in informational only, neutral, please.
I believe you requested five minutes. That's correct.
I did, but probably won't need that, sir.
See if there's anybody in favor. Is there anybody else in favor that wants to speak?
Well, I also want to speak on information.
Well, okay. There have been two requests. Under the, under the commission's rules, organizations have five minutes to speak. We've had a request from the Burton Hills Homeowners Association, Mr. Ed Davis, to speak for that time. And we have a request from, I'm not sure the exact name, but the Burton Hills Commercial Property Owners Association, be represented by Mr. Tom White. And they'll speak five minutes, up to five minutes each. And then all other speakers will be two minutes.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Ed Davis, and I am the president of the Burton Hills Homeowner Association. There are approximately 500 homeowners in the residential PUD. I am here today not to speak for all 500, but to speak for the majority. I know there are some individual homeowners that are opposed to this application, and they too should have an opportunity to speak to you today. There's much concern on our part regarding the initial PUD amendment that increased the allowable square footage of the office park, which the HOA was never formally made aware of when requested in 2007. We also have very strong concerns regarding the infrastructure impacts of this current application on the residential community, such as increased traffic, stormwater management, and loss of green space. That said, the majority of the homeowners I come here today to represent wish to take a position of neutrality at this time. If the Planning Commission approves this application, the homeowner association will work with the developer prior to the October public hearing and, and public hearing and council meeting to see if these concerns can be mitigated. It is our hope these concerns will be taken seriously by the developer, our councilman, and the mayor's office so that we can work towards resolution. We feel this neutral position will allow for continued dialogue with the developer and the city of Nashville, allowing us to submit a much more informed position at the council meeting scheduled for October. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I'm Ralph Knapp. I'm president of the Jefferson Square Homeowner Association, which is, if you are familiar with the Burton Hills property, the two driveways that encompass Burton Hills Boulevard coming in and out of the development. Our one and only entrance and exit from our property is right between those two. They have two traffic lights, one at each intersection, and we fend for ourselves going out on Hillsborough, which has been previously stated as an extremely busy thoroughfare at that particular point, particularly coming up and down the hill, coming in from Williamson County. I'm here to ask, I'm sort of also neutral. I'm not, I'm not speaking for my homeowners. We, we know not whether they're in favor or against this, but I am speaking on behalf of concerns, two concerns that we have. One is pedestrian. The statements have been made about the walkability of this project. It is on the Burton Hills side, which is Sean McGuire's council district. We are in another council district, Carter Todd, so we have not been part of this discussion at all. Our side of the street is a drainage ditch that I'm glad to hear there's going to be a pedestrian facility at the northern intersection, but to get to that intersection, we have to take our lives in our own hands. There's no sidewalk. There's just a drop-off and an open drainage ditch. So I would like, I have a letter that I've sent to our councilperson that I'll give to the staff. Would like for us to be considered, for Public Works to look at that situation. I think our councilperson is already going to make that happen. And also, I would like to ask on behalf of all the development that if the bus line that goes to Hobbs and Hillsborough were extended to come up through our area, through Burton Hills, it would greatly enhance the traffic issue.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Just, just end it. If seen none, anyone in opposition be given five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, before I begin, can I make sure that each of the members has in front of them the information that I sent down, which is a letter dated August 9, 2012, which has a number of attachments to it? I'd just like to make sure that's in the hands of the members.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. I'm with Toon Andrew Kenan White. I represent the Office Neighborhood Association in Burton Hills, as well as Archard Bell, one of the owners of property there, and certainly some of the neighbors. It's my request at the outset that an absolute minimum of this matter be deferred, if not disapproved today. This is a packet that I've handed out to you. I'd like to reference that in part. The history here is that this PUD was approved in 1984. And if you look at the packet, one of the things I'll reference first is Exhibit Number 1. This is at a time when Ferris Deep was the executive director of the Planning Department. And Mr. Deep sent a letter to Carroll Properties, but it was the attention of John Akin, the current applicant at the time, saying the matter had been approved. And then you'll see attached as the first exhibit to my letter, quote, "The original conditions of approval for the Burton Hills PUD." If you'll reference that and go to the second page of it, it ends "Height Controls." "The northernmost office structure shall not exceed three stories in height." Now, I want you to keep that in mind for just a moment. We're obviously here dealing with the northernmost office building, which is to be seven stories in height. Now, in addition to that, the language in the conditions is also very clear. "Final approval of the 100,000-square-foot gross of office space shall be given only if financial commitments are secured for the widening of Hillsborough Pike to six lanes from Hobbs Road northward to Woodmont Boulevard." Obviously, that's never happened. There's never been a financial commitment. It's never been improved. Both of those are big conditions. I want you to look for just a minute at the last page of what I've handed out to you. If you look at the last page, I want you to see the building in white on that page is the proposed seven-story building. If you look at the other buildings to the right of that, it's the buildings that are owned by the current applicant, Mr. Akin. And if you look at that, they're three stories in height. Everybody knew what the ground rules were here. This was a PUD, planned unit development. It's theirs to the right. It's three stories. What's being proposed by the same applicant that got the letter in 1984 and that owns the two buildings, that committed to that plan, which are only three stories, is the seven stories. One of the clients that will address you is Archard Bell. They own that building four which faces it. You can see what that does to that building and any kind of view shed that building would have heading downtown. Now, I want to confirm to you, this is a PUD. This body deals with these all the time, a planned unit development. Everybody buys in and they're aware of what the components and commitments are. In this case, everybody lived with the max 550,000 square feet, every developer, until 2007. In 2007, in September, the current applicant came forward and asked for a revision. The revision was basically add 10% or 54,000 square feet. At the time, the staff will confirm this, no notice was given out, 54,000 square feet, no traffic study. It was a violation of all the concepts which we have, both the three-story and the Hillsborough Road issues. Now, there's another increase, saying we want to add 54,000 square feet again, this time by means of an amendment. If you look at the staff recommendation this time, the staff says, "Why do we need a PUD amendment here?" Because the PUD has to be consistent with the base zoning. That's exactly what was true in 2007. It didn't happen. The base zoning here is residential, R15. The overlay, which the staff is now saying, "You have got to make it now," as opposed to 2007, is, "This is an amendment." The point is, in 2007, you increased the square footage by 54,000. It was done on a consent agenda down here. Now, these people that live in that office park certainly would have been down there had there been any notice. And you look at what is done to one of their premium buildings. They've got $50 million in investments here. They got no notice at all in 2007. And in 2007, what's true now is true then, and that is the base zoning is not consistent. It had to be changed. I believe 2007 is a nullity. The other thing that I'll mention to you is, with respect to the prior matter that we heard here, Jan Bushing was a great member and chairman of this commission. What did she say? "It's the integrity of the plans, what people buy into, it's what they look for, they rely on." It's the same case here. I'll make this comment. There's a minute and a half rebuttal here by the applicant. I want them to come in and identify, since they said, "There's a national company who's committed to a headquarters here." I want them to come up in the rebuttal and confirm, who is the national company? And at least make the commitment, the change here is conditioned upon a confirmation that company's going to build and occupy this building. That's the whole premise. We've got a national company, got to do the building for them. Who are they? Make the approval condition. Finally, I'll say this, there's enough clear, in my opinion, impropriety here about how this has come along. It's clearly going to end up in a piece of litigation about the approval here, is my humble opinion. I appreciate your courtesies. Thank you. We'll answer any questions.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition be given two minutes.
My name is Chuck Archard, the principal of Archard Bell Investment Group. As defined in the zoning ordinance, and I quote, "A PUD district is an alternative zoning process that allows for the development of land in a well-planned and coordinated manner." The ordinance also states, "In return, the PUD district provisions require a high standard for the protection and preservation of well-planned living and working environments." In 1984, the Bud, the Burton Hills Commercial Office PUD was adopted. Some of the high standards that were put in place were setback requirements, limitations on height, limitations on square footage, and green space requirements. Before us today is a request to provide SP zoning for one of the five parcels in the Burton Hills Commercial PUD. In my opinion, this is not a special project. It's a basic office building, just like the other five office buildings that are in the original PUD. The only reason that you call it special is to circumvent the high standards that are required by the PUD, which were applied to the five other buildings. Specifically, it's to circumvent the increase in the density by 20% from 550,000 square feet to 660,000 square feet. It's to circumvent the maximum height restriction on this parcel from three stories to seven stories, 133%. It's to increase the setback requirements by 40% from 35 feet, or from 60 feet to 30 feet. It's to reduce the green space so that they can cut down 40 beautiful mature trees. I ask you to go back to the purpose of a PUD. It's for the protection, preservation of well-planned living and working environments. It's not being protected with this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for letting us come tonight. My name is Robert Bell Jr., and I am one of the partners of Archard Bell Investments. In 2003, we came to Burton Hills, and from 2003 to 2005, bought two major buildings in Burton Hills for a total of $50 million. And the reason we bought those buildings is because we have 207 investors who invest with us and are looking for absolutely top-quality Class A office space, and we found it in Burton Hills. The wonderful thing about it was that we had a PUD, and we knew that as we bought these, these buildings, it could not be built out because it said clearly 550,000 square feet. And when we bought Building 4, that completed the amount of building space that was allowed under the PUD. The second reason we liked it is because we paid the highest price per square foot of any building at that time in Nashville in Building 4. And when we paid the price, we realized no one could build in front of us. With the restrictions that were in place with the PUD, as my partner Chuck Archard said, was three stories. And now we're facing a seven-story building, which would completely block all of our tenants on the north side of Building 4, definitely affecting the values and affecting our tenants. And that is one of the things we are so proud about, is the tenant base that we do have in our buildings. So that would absolutely destroy the views. But you ask, why would that matter? Well, it does because the first three floors of our building would face parking garages, and the upper floors would look into the other building, obliterating the views that they have. We feel, and I hope you feel the same way as we do, we played by the rules. We had the PUD. We followed the requirements, and all of the, all of the people in the commercial want to follow it, except the developer and the applicant now. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Robert Bell with Archard Bell Investment Group. As you have heard, we invested $50 million in 2003 and 2005 on Burton Hills 3 and Burton Hills 4 combined. I can assure you that had we known about the expansion in 2007 from the applicant, we would have acted against it. We knew nothing. We received no notification as neighbors, and there is no mention in any Office Association Minutes regarding any new development. This was slid in and approved with total lack of information. Now, the applicant wants to build another 10% upon the 2007 expansion, of which we just learned about last week. They want to build a seven-story building that completely blocks our building and the views of our tenants, for which they pay a premium. As you can read in the handout provided by Huber &amp; Lamb Appraisal Group, the seven-story building that is proposed would result in a $4 per square foot reduction in rental rates or a loss of more than $5 million in value. I urge you to move against this proposed amendment.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Jeff Hines. I'm a landscape architect and planner by profession and a principal of Little John Engineering Associates. And like Mr. White, I have been doing this long enough to also have Chairwoman Bushing when this was approved and was one of the principal planners for Burton Hills back in 1984. Two of the tenants that that master plan was developed with were two things. The views from Green Hills as a community, looking south to the hills, and that the principle was to stair-step the office buildings as they went up Red Bud Hill specifically. And the second point was to terrace the office buildings from the buildings themselves so they maintained the views to downtown. I think the proposal that's before you basically violates those principles. And as Mr. White pointed out, it violates what the planning staff saw along our same lines, that the buildings to the north should be three stories maximum height. If you look at the sketch, I think a picture's worth a thousand words. But the final thing I would leave you with today is that the master plan for Burton Hills has produced a very valuable, well-integrated, mixed-use community. I think it's a place people want to live, and I think that master plan was developed with a lot of insight back in 1984. I ask you to honor that and disapprove this today. Thank you.
My name's Joe Carpenter. I'm here to speak against this action. I'm currently Director of Transportation at Little John Engineering. Up till this past September, I was Assistant Commissioner at TDOT over environment and planning, and have worked over the many years with Metro Public Works and in the metro government on studies on Hillsborough Road and the traffic impacts. I have a lot of respect for Public Works, have a lot of respect for Robert Murphy Traffic and the young lady here tonight speaking, but I would ask you to consider that these actions and the references that they're making to you, looking at the staff report, are only in reference to already what's been approved in 2007, which has already been called into question as to how wise and how much publicity was given to that decision, saying that the traffic is minimal. When you actually look When you actually look at the traffic increase versus what was originally planned in the PUD from the ITE land code numbers shown by Metro Public Works, it's going to generate over 1,400 weekday trips a day. It's going to add over 200 vehicles at peak periods through there. Hillsborough Road is already at capacity and at a mess through there. All of our studies that we've worked with Public Works looking at and with TDOT in the past, we're looking for any kind of improvement to reduce the delay up and down Hillsborough through the intersections with additional turn lanes or other items. My concern is that through the neighborhood, through the residential area, that this is going to force traffic at peak periods to go back and seek relief through that, to get down to Harding. As well, the recommendations for improvements at the northern signal are only dealing not truly with any operations, but only with the problems in keeping the inductive loop ramps working and the pavers looking for video detection. I appreciate your consideration tonight. Again, I would recommend that you at least postpone, if not disapprove, this action. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Frame. I'm a resident, long-term resident of Middle Tennessee, retired U.S. Army and former commander of the Tennessee State Guard. I'm here to speak against this because several years ago, my wife and I both invested our retirement income into these properties from Archer Bell because knowing the area and knowing the quality of that location and knowing the PUD requirements, we felt it was a situation that would benefit us in our retirement and made the decision to do that. Now, with the proposed plans, we see that that retirement investment could well be in jeopardy. So we're very concerned about it. Knowing the area around Green Hills and the traffic situation, I would reiterate what others have said, that this could not help. It would only exacerbate the problems that already exist in that area, putting this magnitude of building in. So I wanted to register that in my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I'm Margot Chambers, and I live in Nashville, and I commute to Green Hills daily. I'm asking you to withdraw the approval of this project. I believe this project upzone is related to the Midtown upzone needs for mass transit. It's unfortunate that the local transit authority has a Midtown-Green Hills corridor. As you know, the Midtown upzone ordinance was deferred for one month due to the many concerns that were brought up at the Metro Council public hearing meeting, August 7. Those concerns involved increased density upzoning tied directly to federal density requirements for a mass transit system. I believe Green Hills density should not be associated with the Midtown mass transit upzone, currently under consideration by Metro Council. Please slow down and listen to the residents. Please take your time to consider the needs of the citizens served by elected officials of the Nashville Metropolitan Government. Please show the public the traffic study. Was that traffic study done to comply with the federal law, USDOT Section 4F? I'm asking for that compliance prior to any approval. As you are probably aware, Mr. Michael Skipper, the Executive Director of the MPO, simply asked the Chairman of the MPO on March 21, 2012, to add the East-West Corridor to the 2035 Regional Transportation Plan, and the Chairman obliged. The Chairman of the MPO Executive Board is Mr. Rogers Anderson, the Mayor of Williamson County, a mayor who does not represent Green Hills residents. Please do not approve these amendments. Get this whole thing done right for the City of Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Jack Tenzel, and I live at 408 Clifton Place, which is in the Bel Air community of Burton Hills. Now, I can only speak for myself and my other half, who's probably back there with a gun, but she says, and in no uncertain terms, she is adamantly opposed to this. We are both parents and grandparents, and when you see Longview, I don't know where this young lady did her traffic study, but you can sit in my driveway any morning you want and watch the racetrack coming down the hill, and then in the afternoon, you can watch the racetrack going back up the hill. There's a bench out on that island that children sit at to catch the bus. There's another one just slightly up the hill to where the children sit, and around the corner, there's another one. And some of those children are handicapped. And I can tell you right now, I've been in my driveway when people were cutting through from the office buildings, going up that hill and down that hill, and almost been hit in my own driveway. So I can tell you, I appreciate it if you would not approve any zoning change at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Stutterford, and I live at 402 Clifton Place in the Village of Bel Air, part of Burton Hills. I bought there some 15 years ago on the basis of the congenial layout of Burton Hills. It has open spaces, it has fountains, the ease of walking for exercising, and the limited commercial office buildings. This is all brought about by good planning and zoning. Now, we're going to tear up the PUD and discard the zoning. We will have an entrance looking straight at a three- or four-story concrete parking garage with offices above, a veritable concrete jungle. The architects that addressed us on Monday never provided an architectural rendering of what this building is going to look like. My second point is this, please disregard that letter sent by our councilman. Contrary to what he says, he has not spoken to the homeowners of Burton Hills, nor, I believe, to the other stakeholders of Burton Hills. However, he has allied, he's been allied to the developers of this project. He's not shown up today, and I question whether he should withdraw that letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marlene Gale. I've resided at 30 Bel Caro Circle for the past 26 years. And when we purchased our home in Burton Hills, we bought it under the guise of the original PUD of 1984, which specified that the office buildings would be no more than three stories. And on August 4, our homeowners were notified that there was a meeting scheduled for August 6 to inform us of the petition to amend the PUD to allow seven-story buildings. Well, we are very much opposed to this. There were approximately 80 to 100 homeowners in attendance, and it is my opinion that the vast majority were very much opposed to the change of the PUD. Mr. Ed Davis, President of our Burton Hills Homeowners Association, stated that the amendment was approved and supported by the mayor and by our councilman. Therefore, in his opinion, that it was a done deal. I sure hope this is not true. He also inferred that the homeowners, it was not necessary for us to attend this meeting today, that he could speak for us and represent us at this meeting and speak on our behalf. Well, I'm here to ask you to consider, on behalf of the homeowners of this development. And please do not approve this change to allow seven-story buildings in Burton Hills. I'm very much opposed to this amendment, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Pardon me, she said a lot what I was going to say, but my name is Patricia Collins, and I live in the village of Foxview. I attended the informational meeting on August 6. The first group was the developers, and they did not have a rendering or photograph of anything they said they wanted to build. And also, they said Mr. Aiken could not be at that meeting because he was attending his sister's birthday. So I guess he's there tonight, too. I don't know. I did, in the question-answer group at the end of the meeting, people were against it. They voiced that very much. And also, I live on Bel Caro, which comes out on the main drag, and all the people flying down Foxview, there's a stop sign there. They never stop. I walk my dog, and I'm serious, you've almost been hit. They could care, they flip you off, they yell at you, and a lot of them go to the nursing homes, and most of them go to the office complex. And that's not the kind of neighborhood that we like. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity today. My name is Cynthia Stoker. I reside at 33 Bel Caro Circle in the Village of Foxview, where I currently am the President of my Homeowners Association. Speaking for the majority of my neighbors, we oppose this project. The reasons we oppose it are safety. We're concerned about safety during construction and safety in the long term. Aesthetics, as you heard the other folks say. We're concerned about increased traffic. We're concerned about noise. We're concerned about the removal and the cutting of trees and the green space reduction. We're concerned about increased carbon monoxide. We're also concerned about the fact that we were unaware of any changes to the PUD in 2007. We ask for your consideration and your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you guys for listening to us. This is real important to a lot of the homeowners. My name is Charlene Bohannon, and I live at 41 Bel Caro Circle. One of my concerns is traffic, noise, pollution, both water and air, lighting, because if they bring in that parking area, all of the lighting and everything, I think that's going to be another issue. Safety of our children, our grandchildren, and our pets in the road with all that traffic. And the no notifications seem really very, very unfair. And thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Boris Green, and I also reside on Bel Caro Circle at number 10 and have been living there since 2005. Although I didn't spend $55 million on my property, I did put down quite a bit. My home is paid for, and with the understanding that I was moving into a protected area, that the zoning was laid down, that the Burton Hills 1 phase was built out, and therefore I invested my money and made my home there. The same complaints that everyone else here has, I have as well. Burton Hills is a 30-year-old, very successful PUD, and compared to the rest of Green Hills, it is a bright spot. It is a real tranquil place that works. We have great diversity. We have single-family condos and assisted living and senior living. It is eminently walkable. People come from around our neighborhood to walk our neighborhood. It has so much to commend it. One of the nice things was the transition area between our walking, I mean, our residential area and the commercial area, because it progresses up the hill with some green space. It's very, very well done to put this building here, which is an intrusion. It's too large. The setbacks, they're asking for it to have larger setbacks. It is totally an intrusion and makes our property probably worthless, and is going to be probably, regardless of architectural merit, not the right building in the right place. Also, too, would I like to show a show of hands for people who are against this, who've come, who live in the Burton Hills members, community? Anybody, please show hands if you've come. I just wanted to let everybody know that there are people, you know, who are against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julia D. Hart. I thank you for the opportunity to come before you and express the feeling of my husband and I. We want to go on record opposing the rezoning request. When my husband and I purchased property in Burton Hills in 1999, the PUD overlay was researched. We took that to be what we could count on in future years. We would like to see those designations held to be, but in 2007, we did not make an appearance at this council to oppose the change in the PUD because the information was not widely broadcast, unfortunately. Again, I want to also, with my husband, go on record opposing the amendment to this proposal. The building of this building requested would be significantly detrimental to the quality of living in Burton Hills residential area closest to the proposed building site during construction and afterward with the loss of green space and trees, plus the greater traffic flow problems, some of which already exist. We hope you will decide not to go along with these proposals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Judith Ginn. I have lived in Burton Hills for 26 years, and during that time, it has retained the character, its original character, when I moved in. The office buildings and the residential areas have coexisted beautifully, seamlessly. There has been no problem there that I have been aware of. I am very much concerned about the increased density and traffic. I think that the seven-story building there, right at the gate, will be an absolute eyesore. Our entrance now from Hillsborough Road is lovely. Your first impression when you move into, when you drive into Burton Hills is a very pleasant, favorable one. I can imagine what that seven-story building right there as you enter the gate would do to that appearance. I urge you to please vote against these changes. And I want to say that I am mystified that our councilman could recommend this without even meeting with the residents first. That does not make sense, and he has lost any future votes from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Payson, and I reside at 602 Arkland Place. That's part of the villages of Ashlon. And, well, first, I'd like to echo everything that my neighbors have said. I'm in total agreement with them. You don't need to hear from me more about the traffic and the aesthetics. I would like to say, though, that I heard only at the break that our, we were asked to vote, and only two of our associations came in against. And I was at this informational meeting on Monday. I go to all my board meetings. No one asked me. I did not give no response, which could be construed as I'm neutral. I wasn't given the opportunity to respond, which my response is against. I can only wonder how many other of our neighbors were also not given the opportunity to vote if they were against or for or neutral. But it concerns me, as does the fact that our councilman recommended this with never having spoken to us, with us never having any information about it in order to take the initiative to follow up with him even on our own. He said that he gave this meeting, the meeting that the applicant, he hoped, would help give the homeowners more information. However, when we asked the applicant specific questions, like what were you going to do for our traffic problems? How many people will be coming in? They were not forthcoming with information. They were vague, they were evasive, and they told us, we all have to work together. But they posed no answers, they gave no rendering, and I feel that I have been sandbagged, and I respectfully ask you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryan Vivin. I'm a condo owner at 605 Arkland Place. You know, I know things change, and I certainly support rational and positive change if it's well-planned. But today, I just want to give my perspective on how this change process has gone. We learned tonight that in 2007, a four-story office building was approved on the consent agenda, which a majority of the residents did not know about. The next step in this change process for rezoning was, we got a postcard, which was postmarked July 5. Received that postcard, we got an additional letter postmarked July 25 explaining that this meeting tonight would take place. This past Monday, we had a community meeting where we all learned the following information from the applicant. We learned that top metro officials already support this development. We learned a traffic study is not needed, and we learned that everything would be okay as far as design and the skin of the building. And we also learned that the residents have gotten ourselves into a 100-meter dash with two competing developers. So in the spirit of the Olympics, I'd like to make this analogy. So in the spirit of the Olympics, I'd like to make this analogy. I think the applicant, Aiken Parkers, came into this race as maybe thinking they're the gold medal favorite. But in my honest opinion, I really, really think they've all started here, because they did not think about the residents. We did not receive, in your earlier discussion tonight with 1A and 1B, the developers, it was known that the developers made phone calls to residents. That was not taking place here. I got 15 seconds. I went across the street yesterday to St. Paul Covenant Church, which has a private school K through 5, I believe, and a church. They had no idea what was going on. They had seen the signs and the pastor had said, what is this all about? I copied the letter for them. They learned just yesterday. It's Carter Todd's district, but in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Seal and I live at 465 Cumberland Place in Burton Hills and I am opposed. Thank you.
My name is Brian Shennard. I live at 4406 Alcott Drive. Anybody who thinks that the traffic on Hillsborough Road there is not congested has never tried to get from point A to point B. I've been trying for 15 years to avoid that very street to get wherever I want to go. And what I see here, Lot 1 is very large, you know? They could build another one or two up there. And I notice that what you do when you look at a new proposal is see what's around it. So one seven-story building, which is totally out of character in that, in that area, would be some justification for doing another. This approval in 19, of the additional space was just sneaky. It was what I view as a breach of the agreement that the developers of this place made with the people who bought there. And I don't think this, this should be a part of it. I don't think you should condone it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Martin Lipke, live at Ash, Villages of Ashlawn. And I echo all the sentiments that my neighbors presented here this evening. And I just wanted to reiterate a few points. One, on Monday night, when we were given information, I would say misinformation or misleading information at best, on behalf of both parties. We were told that there'd be about 200, maybe 225 additional cars. This evening, we heard there would only be 19 more vehicles in the, coming through the area. Well, how could that be? If there's 200 cars, additional, additional employees in the buildings, and they mentioned that they're going to have two trips a day, so that's at least 400 trips back and forth. You've heard my neighbors say the issues with the traffic coming up and down, the people are going to be leaving the buildings through the residence, through the residential area. They don't go out through Hillsborough Road. They go through the residence area out hot in place, which is treacherous. I've heard, almost seen a kid last week get hit by a car screeching to a halt in the morning. It's terrible. As far as the councilman, he has never spoken to any of us. And that's, how can he take a position without even hearing our sentiments about it? So I would say, what happens next? When the next hot healthcare company comes and they grow and they want to make a 10-story building? I'd say enough is enough. I mean, if they want to go to Franklin and Williamson County, let them go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Blankenship. I'm vice president of Facility Development for Symbion Healthcare, ourselves, a Nashville-based healthcare company. We are a tenant in Building 4 in Burton Hills. We have been, we have been a tenant there since 2002. Specifically, we occupy approximately 44,000 square feet, or one-third of the building, directly south to the area that's proposed for rezoning and redevelopment. As I mentioned, we've been a tenant there since 2002 and will continue to be a tenant in that building until at least 2017 and beyond. Our company's long-term commitment to stay in this location speaks to the quality of this development from its inception to its present-day condition. To construct a seven-story building and parking of the magnitude as proposed will have a negative effect on the character and appeal of Burton Hills. We share the concerns of the residents over the removal of some 40 mature trees that will detract from the natural park-like setting of the development. The additional traffic burden placed on an already congested Hillsborough Pike will make the peak time surge worse than it is today and will also increase the probability of delays and accidents in the area. Construction of the building will certainly be disruptive. Noise, dust, construction traffic, and other consequences resulting from this type of project will certainly disrupt day-to-day activities for businesses and residents alike. The addition of the proposed building will severely impact the views to Green Hills and downtown Nashville that us and other tenants in the building enjoy, and quite frankly, have paid a premium to enjoy for several years. It is our request that the Planning Commission continues its positive track record of controlling development in sensitive and congested areas in the city of Nashville and vote against the proposition that is in front of them today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, council.
My name is Chris Murfree and I am here to represent Corrections Corporation of America. We've had our corporate headquarters there for approximately 14 and a half years. We, earlier this week, sent a letter of our detailed concerns to Commissioner McGuire with some of the details of what we felt were pertinent to the situation, so. But we would like to go on record that we oppose the approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I don't think it, think it.
The applicant has a minute and 23 seconds for rebuttal, if they would like.
I'm sorry, how much time do we have?
Minute 23, is that correct?
Yeah. Okay, in two parts.
That's fine.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to address Mr. White's question about the tenant. And I apologize if I mumbled and it sounded like national tenant. I said Nashville tenant, or at least that's what I heard from the back of the room. And at this point in time, I'm not authorized to talk about who it is, and I can't. Erica's going to talk a little bit in our closing, but I did want to reiterate that the cut-through traffic issue is one that we're committed to figuring out. And I don't know how that's going to happen. But we've heard it and we want to figure it out, and we're committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Erica Garrison. I'm with Waller-Lanston and we're here on behalf of Aiken Partners. The overarching theme that you've heard today is that a PUD is supposed to remain intact and a PUD should not be revised and a PUD should not reflect changes. However, the fact of the matter is, PUDs are revised on a regular basis. You see PUD revisions fairly routinely and somewhat often, I would suspect, in front of the Planning Commission. This is simply a revision. It's a revision allowing for an incremental increase in office space. Office space is already allowed on this site. It's consistent with the community plan and it makes sense. This design makes good planning sense and we hope that you approve it. Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, close the public hearing on my favor. The opposed motion, Carrie Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'd like to ask a couple of questions of staff. It is obviously true that we see a lot of PUD revisions and PUD amendments. Not so much when, when things are considered complete, I don't think. And I'd just like the staff to talk about that as, in a general way, not necessarily this, just, just this issue, but do we have any guidelines? Do we have, you know, it looks to me like there is a difference between the natural change that happens to meet new, new needs in a community and, and an area that is developed and pretty much built out. I'd just like to hear the staff's thoughts about that as a conceptual issue.
I mean, I think, I can't tell you that we haven't had them in the past. The whole purpose of the process we're going through is basically to allow consideration by the council of a rezoning and to whether or not that rezoning is appropriate. This is not a revision. A revision has been part of, was part of the process in 1984 and continues to be part of the process and that was, that was done. It was allowed and, or permitted in 2007 in accordance with the ordinances that existed and the procedures that we've always followed on that. The whole purpose of going through, and this process now is an amendment, requires full council participation and is the same as a rezoning effect.
So in a, in a sense, even though it's a large area that looks built out, the same way we rezoned downtown, which appears to be built out in places, we, we would do this if it seemed appropriate? Is that?
That's what you're considering and you're considering in light of, of the conditions that exist, as it's, it's in effect a basic rezoning of this property.
I don't know if it impacts legally our decision here, but I would like to hear more discussion from staff about the, the 2007 issue, just for my own interest, about how that happened and was there something unusual about it?
No, there was nothing unusual about that. As was pointed out earlier, is that we deal with PUD revisions very routinely. Phase, Building 4, which has been mentioned several times, has improved around 2001 and that was actually approved as a PUD revision and final. Just as in 2007, there was no notices given out.
Because we don't, we don't give notices on revisions of PUDs.
Correct.
I mean, to some revisions, we do for.
Anything that, anything that qualifies as an amendment that has to go back to council.
But a revision that we handle ourselves does not require notice.
Correct.
So that's either, that may be right, but it's, it may be wrong, but it is our longstanding procedure.
Correct.
Stewart, just while you're on that question and you're answering that, can I, just go ahead.
I was just going to share with the board that, that that procedure that's triggered, since this was under, approved originally under the COMSO, it's triggering 174120 subsection GH, which talks about the total floor area commercial or industrial classification of a PUD should not, shall not be increased more than 10% beyond the total floor area last approved by the council. So if it had, then it would have triggered that, those other provisions that would have perhaps required maybe a different notice and a different procedure. But because that was not triggered, then that's why it was approved the way it was in 2007. I hope that provides some clarity for the, for the board.
Stewart, can I just ask in there, in that conversation, did you say that the Building 4 had a PUD revision as well to get approved? And could you tell us what that was?
I would, we'd have to go back and look at the general, go back, pull those files for that specific application. We just know that in 2001, it was approved by the Planning Commission as a revision and final site plan, similar to 2007. There was, there was approval, there was a plan or a building approved for that, so there was minor changes to that original plan and that's how it happened.
Stewart, you finished? Hunter?
How tall is Building 4?
I believe it's six stories.
Which violates the original PUD agreements.
Five.
Is that right? Five stories?
It's, it's approved on the plan, the 1984 plan for six stories.
I believe, I did, let me correct. I believe, though, that the plan, because there's been a lot of talk about three stories, I believe the plan that actually was approved by council has, goes up to, allows or identifies buildings up to six stories. And there's not a, a limit on that, right?
There's nothing on the PUD plan that speaks to height requirements.
Or in the conditions of approval?
Yeah, the, the item that was handed out by Mr. White included conditions from the original approver, approval in 1984. The 1989 amendment, or 1998 amendment that was approved by council did not include these conditions.
Judy?
Thank you. And I know this is a big, sensitive issue, but that's what I was looking at. So, so they could have built up to six stories, but for whatever reason, all of the designs there are three. Is that true? There, some are three and some are five?
Yeah, the original council plan has no height restrictions, other than it shows buildings on the site with different stories. The tallest building on, in the plan is six stories.
So they're asking for seven stories, it's not?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No. Thank you.
Counselor?
Greg, clarification on what you, statement you made just prior to the commissioner's question about the, the last council revision of the PUD. You said that something about it didn't include the provisions and I'm, I'm fuzzy on what you meant by that.
There was a, a handout given to you by Mr. White that referred to the 1984, the original approval. You were given the minutes from, I believe this is from the Planning Commission meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In that, there was a height control provision that said, the four office structures attached to the parking deck shall not exceed six stories in height. The northmost office structure shall not exceed three stories in height. That's what we're referring to.
Okay, so when you said that the last council revision didn't include that, are you meaning that, that, that stayed in place or that that was eliminated?
That was eliminated. It was not part of the council approval in 1998.
Okay, so the PUD that was approved by the council in 1998 is different than the PUD that we have before us in, in Mr. White's handout?
Yes, this is from the 1984 PUD. In 1998, there were several changes to the office area. There was also the addition of the Presbyterian church that was on the hill that was, that was not approved in the original overlay. So you had several different changes that happened in 1998.
Okay. Okay, so question for our legal counsel, I guess. How binding are the provisions of a PUD?
Well, if, well, I, I guess I would have to say that if the PUD is approved by council, it would have the effects of any other ordinance that's passed by council in terms of being binding, until it is amended or revised. And, and there are provisions in the code that allow for revisions and amendments and you have to follow those provisions, depending on what it is that you're trying to do to a PUD. So I'm not exactly sure if I'm answering your correct, your question, but.
Well, I, I guess I just kind of fill in the blanks here on my, what I'm trying to get to. So if the, the original PUD were the document that we are referencing, then this particular statement about the northernmost structure not exceeding three stories, that would be a binding statement. Is that correct? It would be, I mean, Bob can answer it. I think there's two factors there. One, was it still a condition of, of the council approval? And then, two, is where, what did the northernmost building actually refer to? There would have had to have been a building shown in this location that the northernmost building referring to, because it's, it's not some hypothetical northernmost building, because it had to have been one that, it would have had to have been one that was identified on that plan, that it would have been referred to specifically. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, did the, the 87, or when was it?
84.
84 revision, that took this statement out. The 84 document is, is, that we're currently under now is not the, the original document. There, there are significant changes. Is that what we're?
I don't know if I can clarify this at all, but the, the, first of all, I think the northernmost building that, that's being referred to, at that time in 1984, would have been the building behind the lake, which is three stories. And the conditions of approval that were handed out, I, I think we would have to do some more research to figure out where those came from, because the, the approval letter that's in that packet from, from 1984 did not include any conditions. And normally, if there were conditions in the PUD, they would have been part of that approval letter that's in the packet. So I think what we would have to do is do a little more research to figure out where those conditions came from and what, what. those conditions came from, whether they were part of the general plan amendment, whether they were part of the rezoning request, whether council actually approved those conditions, or whether those were just something that was looked at at the Planning Commission level. And so, I think there's... I haven't seen those conditions before, but the actual approval letter from the commission did not include those conditions. So, I just don't... I don't know that we can answer where those conditions came from at this point.
Okay. I'm just trying to get at the relevance of...
Yeah, and then in 1998, when the PUD was amended, there weren't any additional conditions put in that dealt with the height, the buildings, or anything like that. So, there was nothing in the 98 approval that referenced these height restrictions either. So, that's kind of where we are.
Okay. And I have one other question, and I don't know... Mr. Bernard, you may answer this. Staff can do a 10% approval of a floor area ratio, right?
The ordinance, the zoning code, as it exists today and has been existing, allows the Planning Commission to approve up to a 10% increase in what the council approves.
Okay, so, with that understood, can a staff do multiple 10% increases to the original PUD?
No, no. No, it has to be a 10% increase to what the council approved. Now, if the council comes back and approves a different number, then there's another 10%. But the council has to approve it, and it's 10% from whatever the number the council approved. I think in this case, Bob, it was 550,000.
I think that's right.
Right, and so it's 10% of that.
Okay, so, the original increase was prior to the last council action?
The increase in 2007 was after the 1998 amendment by council. So, we were still calculating all the revisions that had happened since 1998, and that revision in 2007 still amounted to less than 10% of the amount last approved by council.
Okay, so that council action basically set a new floor?
That council action in 1998 is the limit. It's still the one you're operating under today.
Okay.
It's 550,000 square feet. Why they're having to do an amendment is they're requesting more than 10% of the cumulative 10% of that 550,000.
Right. Yeah. One of my very first challenges on the council floor when I was elected in 2007 had to do with the revision of a PUD, and everything that we were trying to do fit within the plan for the area, but there was a need for 13% increase, and the members of the PUD, none of them were in favor, because this was a competitive business that was going in. So, nobody wanted the competition. So, for 3%, we were unsuccessful. I dealt with another PUD revision when Piedmont Gas went into the last available property in Century City. And by the reverse, every member of that Century City PUD was in favor of what they were willing to do, but we worked through a process on the front end to get them to that place. So, you know, I'm... There are other people to speak here, but I just think that, from a personal perspective, that there's some more work to be done here before I'm comfortable in making any kind of decision on this. Thank you.
Dirk?
I agree with council member Clay Martin on this one. There are still some unknowns, and I do believe that there's work to be done on this before we could make an informed decision.
Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself on this matter.
Andre?
Yeah, I appreciate you walking through the history of it, because we've heard it, and it takes a while to sink in, but just to have one more question on that, to be sure I understand. In 1998, the new council decision was made, and then in 2007... And that was at... That was at the time, 550,000 square feet were allowed, and then in 2007, an additional 10% of 54,000 were agreed to. So, then now they're 604,000 allowed, or we only today, we got to 550 in 2007? That was the part I didn't understand.
Okay. In 1998, the plan was approved for 550,000 square feet.
Right.
So, 10% of that, you could go up to 605,000 square feet without triggering an amendment under the zoning code requirements.
And so, now in 2012, the request is for another 10%, based on the 2007 approval.
They've increased it over 660,000. It's not...
It's more than that.
Yeah.
Right, it's more than 10%, which is why we're here.
So, they've gone over...
If it had been under 10%, you could have approved it, but it's over, and that's why we're here.
They were right under the 10%.
I think it's important to understand that today, this commission, under the ordinance, has authorized basically 605,000 square feet. What they're asking for is an amendment to rezone the property to allow a total, a new total, adjusting that 550,000 up to, what is it, 660,000?
660,000.
So, if the council approved that, that would allow 660,000 plus the potential for 10% of 660,000. That would be the effect of that approval. Because it's basically a rezoning, a complete new rezoning, is what it is.
Well, I think we could use some time.
Stewart? Mr. Chairman, there are some interesting cases brought to us that are pretty cut and dry. We're just not sure what to do, because we're not really sure how we feel, and there are others that are complicated, and we hear from... We hear factual disputes from people we trust and have learned to trust on both sides. And I think this is a very complicated case that deserves more discussion. I don't think there's even a council bill filed on this.
There's not yet. There is not yet.
I have no idea how I will ultimately vote, and I know we've closed the public hearing, but I would like to have more time to think about this and review materials. And I move that we defer this for one minute. Second?
Would you reopen the public hearing based on new information at the time? Or not?
I would have no problem reopening it for new information. I don't think we need to hear this from the same people and the same arguments. Is there a possibility of doing that, or is it open or shut in one way or the other? Is that in our rules?
Reopening the public hearing is not in the rules, only rehearing. I would venture to say you could reopen it, as long as it's clear, the basis for you reopening the public hearing, and I think you've already articulated what that would be, and that's having additional information being made available.
All right. That's what I would suggest, is not a complete reopening, because we've heard the argument. Would that be my motion? Hunter?
I just, before we second and voted on that motion, we've spent a lot of time on the details and the history and all that. I think, you know, philosophically, to me, these types of projects are real opportunities for us to create a more sustainable, more intense... You know, back to the arguments we talked about earlier, these types of sort of office park developments, Metro Center, Century City, others, are real opportunities for us to take advantage of the infrastructure that we have and to build a better case for transit and to build more walkable, more mixed-use communities. So, I'll wait to see what happens with the motion, but I just wanted to get on the table that, you know, generally, I think this is a good idea, despite some of the history questions and details.
Before we got a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, so then we go ahead with the discussion. Philip?
As part of coming back, can we request some dialogue between the parties before that and kind of hear the result of... Is that as a part of what we hear when we come back?
You request whatever you want to.
I think there's room for that. You know, I'm hearing on the part of some of the neighbors in this area, an openness to this developing out. I just think that there is a lack of information that makes a lot of people uncomfortable. And as we've seen, you know, in a lot of cases, when parties come together, some changes and adjustments can be made that kind of take out those questions and make things... Make the road a little more smooth. I just think that that's... That should be part of this process. If we're going to defer this, I think we should expect the parties to get together and to do some serious dialogue with each other and see if they can iron out some of these differences to make our decision a little easier when we come back.
The council indicated in his letter that he'd meet with the community too, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, as a point of... Pass back on. Okay, we've got a motion, a second. And on, I think, to give them ample time that we'd go into September, and there's some question as to whether we'll have a full quorum on September the 13th. I think there's four members that are going to be out.
What happened in the next meeting?
And so, having that head office, then I would suggest that we defer till September the 27th. So, that's...
I don't... I mean, from a bill point of view, I'm not sure that it makes any difference. There isn't one that can be heard, filed that could be heard, I don't believe. Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, that could be heard at the September meeting. And so, the earliest would be the October meeting that you could have the public hearing, and so if you held it at the end of September, you would still be able to get to this October. Is that correct, Bob?
It's a bill request.
Right, right. But it can't get there... My point was, it can't get there in September.
The council member would have to suspend the rule.
That wouldn't happen.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to defer to September the 27th meeting.
Called in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Motion is deferred. I didn't... What happened?
If in 90... If 550,000 were allowed...
What about next meeting? Fourth, Tuesday. Fourth, Thursday. That's what I had in mind.
The commission could go up to... But this is still...
What was your motion?
It's a 4-1 meeting.
Apparently, we voted on the date certain late September instead of the next meeting.
I guess it was recast by the chair, and I guess he... Hunter, you got anything from... Just too quick. Give them time to air their differences.
I was thinking of a meeting with whoever. Excuse me.
Hunter, you got anything from Ms. Stark? Okay. We need to get them out. Ask you to take your conversations outside. We still have a meeting to attend to.
Got to go.
Thank you, Hunter. No executive committee...
Recast a motion.
Councilman, anything from the council we need to hear about?
I just... We've had several comments this evening that were made about the East-West connector, and from the standpoint of the commission here, you might be interested to know, one of the speakers in the last group made mention of the fact that that bill was deferred for 30 days on Tuesday night for some additional input and discussion. There's concern from some of the people who own property along West End about the impact, and there's also concern over some of the federal requirements for density.
Look, if I could clarify that, there are no federal requirements for density.
Okay.
And I think that was... The news reports were basically incorrect. What you're seeing on the Midtown Plan had nothing to do with the East-West connector at all. The Midtown Community Plan was started before the East-West connector ever was envisioned, and the commission spent almost two years in the process of developing the... Working with the property owners, developing a vision for the East... For the Midtown Community, and then you adopted the community plan update, and then the zoning was to follow that along. To the degree that the East-West connector is in any way related, it's to support that, not vice versa. It's not required or anything else. I think it's important to understand, because there's been a lot of misinformation on this, that this commission and this council has really followed a policy for the last, at least 15 years, of intensifying development along that corridor. Everything from the approval of the Gulch, to the approval of the Music Row UDO, to approval of the West End Park UDO, to approval of the rezoning of the downtown, to then following that same line, the Midtown... All those were done. And so, it was done to achieve a policy of land use intensification and the desire that the community wanted for that corridor and the East-West connector, to the degree anyway it's supported, it's involved at all, is to support that and facilitate that development. It's the same as putting in a water line or something else. It's not... There's no federal requirement, and people that are spreading that as some sort of federal requirement are simply wrong.
But I guess, just in response to what you said, I don't think that the relationship to the two issues is clearly understood, and I think that's part of what prompted the council lady to defer that. And hopefully, during that deferral process, that can be communicated more effectively, and maybe some of that opposition will move away.
We'll be glad to help with that. Rick?
Yeah, it's several things that I need to say. First, I want to... Is Michelle... Did she... Oh, there she is, okay. Stand up there, Michelle. Michelle Hollingsworth is a new employee of ours. She's been with us now for a couple of months, I guess, or maybe a month and a half, or...
A week.
Whatever. Oh, well. But she comes to us from the Tennessee Department of Labor and Workforce. She will be working inland development and will be filling in for Kelly when she's out and here. So, she's here learning the, I guess, the ropes here and trying to understand what's going on. So, we welcome Michelle and glad to have you with us. Just a couple of words. As you all know, Hillary passed away. This Hillary Canley passed away on Monday night. Information we have of his visitation will be tomorrow between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 o'clock at Marshall Donnelly Combs Funeral Home on 25th and right next to Centennial Park. Her memorial service is scheduled for 11:00 o'clock on Saturday at the Second Presbyterian Church, 3511 Belmont Boulevard. We're in the process of working with several other people and establishing a college memorial fund for... To receive contributions for her children. As you know, she has three girls, and I believe the oldest is eight, that... Michael and the family will be dealing with, and I'll provide any other details on that as that comes up. As a result of the services on Saturday, the chairman suggested that we cancel the Planning Commission retreat and to allow at least anyone that wishes to attend the service to do that, and we will be rescheduling that. If you... Kelly will be getting back with everyone and working on a time for that. As the chairman mentioned, on the September 13th meeting, we currently have six members confirmed, and we know that four members are going to be out. So, those six confirmed members are extremely important. So, if...
Read it into the record.
Gee, LaGuire, Dalton, Ponder, Atkins, and Haynes are the six. So, if any of those six are not going to be here...
They don't get paid.
They don't get paid, but please let us know before... Let us know if you're not going to be there. I mean, it would be a lot easier to deal with the meeting beforehand than it would be afterwards, and we need all six of those people. Public Works Department has agreed to a new sidewalk policy. I know that we've been involved with that. There's a letter, I think, there. But just to highlight the key elements of that sidewalk policy, if you're doing up to two additional lots, if you're taking one lot and dividing it into two, it's only one additional lot or one lot, but... But, two, up to two additional lots, the fee will be $500 per lot. If it is between three to five additional lots on an existing street, it's going to be $15 per linear foot, up to a maximum of $1,500 per lot. If it's more than five additional lots, it will be $35 per linear foot, up to a maximum of $1,500. So, those are the framework that departments...
It's a policy that will be...
It's a policy of the Public Works Department that says for information to the commission as to how their, this is how their, this is their new charging system, is that what you'd call it, I guess?
It is the in lieu contribution.
In lieu contribution fee, so, this is not a policy the commission adopts.
We don't have to change our rig.
No, don't have to do anything.
We do have a pending case.
You may have a pending case, but this is, this is...
But will he be notified of that?
Yes, yes, we're notifying anyone that it might involve...
This is in effect now?
Yes. As of today.
Does this, I keep interrupting you, but does this conclude your work on this? Yeah, I actually forgot to read it, I was so enthralled with 31st Avenue. I think it's a very strong step in the right direction. It may conclude any interest that we have in change, I just haven't fully read it yet. I urge everybody to read that, so we know.
Let's see if there's anything else I want to say. Other activities are just continue underway, where Antioch Plan is, we've got another web video, those seem to be very popular, and we've had a number of hits on that one. Tiffany, early Saturday morning, is going to be a guest of the Thomas Edison Elementary School, meeting out there with the community out in the Antioch area. And the next Antioch meeting will be the final policy meeting with the Antioch community will be August 30th on that. And I think that's all the key things I have. Thank you.
All the general plan we had in mind this week with Robin, Robin?
Right. Yes, we're in the process of, the general plan, we're in the process of doing a community survey. I think we're getting everyone except Councilman Clayburn, which tends to, there's one, one problem or another, but we'll get them together. Anyway, she is based currently in the process of interviewing approximately 150 individuals, those are one-on-one interviews. Most of y'all should be either scheduled, or have been notified, or will be notified, because every one of you is on there, all the Planning Commission members are there. You're not going to get interviewed twice, just once. But they will be set up, and she came in and basically gave some preliminary findings and did a presentation. There were some pretty interesting findings, but I'm not sure that the key findings, the two most important issues in the community seem to be surprises, education and transportation. Stunning surprises. But she will be concluding that. Now, she's just getting ready, hopefully next week, yeah, next week, she will be starting a 2,000-person random survey. The 150 were names that we gave her on, from different parts of the community. The 2,000-person survey will be a quantitative survey, and it'll reflect the demographics of the community, and that will begin next week. We're just finalizing the questionnaire on that.
Did we get a copy of that survey?
Yes, we'll be glad to.
You email a copy?
Yeah, we don't have it yet, we don't, but I mean, we, we saw a draft today, and she's still refining it a little bit more, based on input today.
Of her bullet points or her...
We've got the, we've got, we've got a copy of the survey that, I mean, basically, the questions she's going to ask y'all, if that's what you're asking for.
But the results that she gave us the other day of what the hot buttons item were, you can share that with the commissioners?
Yeah, yeah, we'll show that, yeah.
Is it? Any other comments? Stand adjourned.